I'd like to call to order the February 1st, 2012 meeting of Milton School Committee. And as is our custom, I invite you to stand as you're able and salute the flag with us. Just on our agenda tonight, there is a yellow version circulating that has a couple of minor edits on it. Calendar is corrected to next year's school calendar as it wasn't the original. And a couple of those under the policy section, these various things have vote on them, which they didn't have before. And there's an attachment for the capital S on community. But other than that, everything is the same as on the original agenda, just a few minor edits. And I'll be sure to point them out as we get there. So as we always do, open with citizen speak. And tonight, we have to start off with a group from our Walkathon. Please begin.
They're going to introduce themselves and then they're going to say.
Hi, my name-
It's okay, go ahead.
Yeah, it's for the air, it's not for us. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Evan Jones. I'm a senior. I play basketball, lacrosse, and I'm in the National Honor Society.
Hi, my name's Acadia. I'm a junior, and I play softball, and I'm in French Club.
And you're on the school committee?
And on school committee.
Hi, my name is Ally, and I play field hockey and basketball.
Outdoorist club.
And I've been outdoorist club assistant. And Harry Potter club.
Hi, I'm Kendall Stanley. I play basketball and soccer, and I'm in Harry Potter Club.
Hi, my name is Tim here, and I'm in the school committee of ping pong club, Spanish club, Asian culture club, three Cs, computer club, full swing club. Yeah.
My name is Lucas Shapiro. I'm on the basketball team, the observer, student leaders, and National Honor Society.
I'm Sam Curley. I'm a senior athlete in basketball. I'm in girls group, National Honor Society, and Spanish club.
Hi, I'm Carl Stanley. I'm a senior here at Mokai. I play basketball, lacrosse, and I'm on the athletic vice.
Hi, I'm Katie Kraus. I play volleyball and basketball. I'm in the Spanish club, student leaders of Harvard.
My name's Caitlin Griffin. I play volleyball, and I'm involved with Japanese exchange program.
Hi, my name is Morgan Kelly. I'm a junior, and I play field hockey, indoor and outdoor track. I'm in targeting club, outdoors club, student leaders, and tomorrow's teachers.
Good day to start.
Okay. Good evening. We are here tonight to tell you about the Fourth Annual Walkathon for Sports and Clubs. The theme of this year's walk is "All In for Sports and Clubs." The Walkathon will be held on Saturday, February 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. in the Kipun Fieldhouse. Students from grade 8 through grade 12 are invited, welcomed, and expected to attend the Walk. We need that.
We know that the Milton public budget only covers one-third of the money needed to run the sports program, and that the clubs are pretty much self-funded through fees. These are fees our parents pay for us to each play a sport, and ticket sales at the gates fund about another third of the athletic budget, and the remaining third must be raised by fundraisers.
There are many ways to use all sorts of things to funders. Sell wildcard cards, cookie dough, and Yankee candles, just to name a few. But we weren't asked to do those things this year. This year, the only funders that students are being asked to do is the MHS Walkathon, which is going to be held Saturday, February 11th, from 1:00 to 4:00.
Another change this year is that a group of about 20 student planners helped adults brainstorm ways to make the walk more fun. And we came up with some pretty great ideas. A faculty-student dodgeball game, a basketball three-point shootout, and a badminton tournament. The marching band is coming, the cheerleaders will be there, and there will also be some student musical performances. There will also be a DJ with a concession stand open.
We love sports and clubs, and we don't want to lose them. No being on team or participating in a club helps us with leadership skills and teamwork. That they help us, we focus on advocacy process.
We need and want your help. We are asking the Milton Committee to help us in the following ways. If you're a parent of a grade 8 through grade 12 student, make sure they are collecting pledges and coming to the walk. And don't forget to bring the pledge sheet, money collected, and the permission slip with you to the walk.
If you are a grade 9 through 12 student and play a sport and participate in the club, we need your support. If you can't attend the walk, can you give a donation? This is for our sports and our clubs, and we need every high school student to show their support.
If you are a business or community member who would like to support our efforts, you can make a donation. Check should be written out to Milton High School and can be sent or dropped off at the high school, or we will come and pick it up for you.
In closing, we would like to thank you for time, interest, and support. We look forward to seeing you all at the Walkathon for Sports and Clubs. We can't imagine Milton High without our sports and clubs.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thanks a lot, very much.
Excellent.
Do I have any questions for them?
John, could you pass down the citizen speak sheet there from the end? We have some more. All right, next we have Meg Castor and Laura Conway. You'll have to figure out what seat you want to sit in.
Good evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you. My name is Meg Castor, and I'm Laura Conway, and we are honored to serve as the co-chairs of the Celebration for Education this year. We just want to go over a few fun facts about the event and let you know what's happening. I have my back to some of these. Our event this year is on March 10th. It's at the Boston Marriott Quincy, the same location as last year. It is a beach party theme this year. So last year was the big backyard bash. This year, it's the big beach ball. We have our logo here with us tonight, our bouncing beach ball here. So we're going from the backyard to the beach. It will be a fun preview of summer with dinner, entertaining entertainment, a great live and silent auction. And our invitations will be mailed tomorrow, and the tickets went online today and are available. And, ah, I lost you. This year also, we have our Milton High School alumni honorees, and they are Elva Proctor from the class of 1933. She is also one of the featured artists in the 350th Milton Anniversary Calendar. And we also have Lamar Reddick, who was the class of '96 and is currently serving as the Athletic Director at Milton Academy.
We have a number of honorary event chairs as well. Dr. Allen and Ada Rose Marin, Keith and Cheryl McDermott, Dick Renahan, and Barbara Sullivan. So we're very happy that they have joined us in the planning of this event. We hope that all of you will turn out and support. It will be a great, great time. We're going to involve a number of you. We solicited Mr. Jett this evening, so this will be good. He'll all be a big surprise. He'll be part of the entertainment. We pulled him on, Mr. Bowles as well, but we'll leave that one for, as an exciting surprise for that evening. And our cause this year where funds will go is going to literacy and hands-on science. In the literacy domain, we are attempting to create legacy libraries. And by that, we mean literacy centers within each classrooms in the elementary schools. And creating an opportunity for students to have just right reads at their fingertips. We had funded a grant at Tucker through the foundation several years ago, and then we would like to expand this across the district. It's modeled after an innovative program in New York City, Shop For Class, where Mayor Bloomberg partnered with American Express to do just the same thing we are doing. Get a number of selections for students so that we can challenge their independent reading skills and have them traverse a path of higher learning and literacy, basically.
Or a cover Pierce. At the Pierce, we are not going into the classroom, we are going into the library itself. And again, we are attempting to expand their nonfiction selections. And at the high school, with the new Comcast Video Lab that was just installed, our goal is to actually expand the video equipment that is available, particularly for the Humanities Department, as they would like to have more of their students being able to film documentaries. And we actually are working with Barbara Wright, with having a few students actually interview and create videos of both of our Milton High School alumni honorees. Our fund need portion, which has been with us at the celebration event for the last few years, is to benefit hands-on science. And again, as we know, children of all ages will really retain and enjoy and become very engaged in science when they are able to do things. And so with the help of teachers and administrators, we are looking at those science kits that can be expanded at all the grade levels and other equipment that will help facilitate those opportunities in the areas of science.
We credit the success of the evening to citizens of Milton and to our sponsors. These are relationships that we cultivate and try and become partners with individuals. Laura and I have been reminded every day, as we have served its role, about the citizenship of Milton and the ability for people to do good. And it has been an overwhelming response to what we have attempted to do. So we really, you know, first and foremost, need to say thank you to the people who have become involved. Our sponsors are very varied this year. They come from banking, insurance, there are large corporate names. We've gotten a good jump start. Of course, we'd like to go further. This is a lofty project that we are attempting. So we continue to try and cultivate these relationships. But we've been very grateful to people and in their generosity.
Yeah, and about the other thing that we'll just follow up on. Right now, we have started our raffle, which again benefits the event. And it is a trip for two to El Conquistador in Puerto Rico. It is round-trip airfare, a five-day, four-night stay with taxes all included. Tickets are on sale at the Common Market, at Cakes. And all of the PTOs have graciously accepted the opportunity to sell at their meetings and events. Tickets are one for 20 and six for 100. So, you know, get your tickets, and hopefully you'll be the lucky winner flying out of this area to the nice sunny shores of Puerto Rico. So.
Would you share with the school committee and the public your ticket plan about tables now that the tickets have gone out? Maybe if you explain the derivation you're doing this year?
Yeah, absolutely. So we have individual tickets that are purchased by February 17th, are at $60. After February 17th, they are $65. And then at $70 per person, you can form a table of 10, where you will get two bottles of wine, reserved seating, and a dessert specialty. All of this on MiltonFoundationForEducation.org.
I'd just like to say thank you to the both of you for putting this on. And last year, if you were not at the event, you may not have gotten a ticket because it was sold out. So it was a great night. The Marriott's a great location, and I appreciate the work of the foundation. And if people want to go to this event, which I think a lot of people do, you should go online and buy them pretty quickly, because last year, there were some disappointed folks, unfortunately. You had over 600 people at the event. It was amazing. And thank you for everything, and good luck.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Ed Hayward.
Good evening. Nice to see you all. My name's Ed Hayward. I'm a parent of two high school boys. I'm here to ask you to preserve the funding for music programs at all levels of the system. I know there are some proposals that would make some reductions at the elementary level, and I know that level has already experienced some cutbacks in the past. I would argue for you to preserve the current level of services, and I know you have many priorities, lots of interests, and a very difficult financial environment, but I would also urge you to maybe look at taking incremental steps to restore earlier cuts. I know you have areas that are tested and measured carefully. Everybody watches them. Maybe that is not the case with music and the arts. But we all enjoy the performances of young people, and certainly by the time they're at the Pierce and the high school, they are recognized as some of the best youth musicians in the state. So my son plays the viola, my older boy Brendan. You might have heard him. He plays in the 16th string quartet. He's played many functions. He and the other members of the quartet have performed probably close to 50 community performances in the last four years. I sent you an email and a letter detailing additional thoughts on this, but I guess I would make a couple of points here, and that is if someone were to, you know, if someone were to say, "We will give you a grant. We'll give you $3 for every dollar you spend on a program," you would think that was an excellent way to leverage town funding. And I would say that as a result of the elementary school music programs, be they orchestra or band or the old chorus programs, or just music appreciation, I think it ultimately leads you to probably a $3 to one payoff. I've been making that investment for the last, well, almost nine years now. It's a significant investment, and parents are willing to make it. And you certainly see the results at the upper grade levels. I don't think you'd turn away that kind of leverage in another format. And maybe it needs to be quantified. Maybe that's something the parents need to do to really show you the return on that investment. Forget what the students get out of it, but just from a financial or fiduciary standpoint. The second thing I would say is that these programs offer opportunities for excellence critical in the school system. And finally, I would say, you know, we see kids who don't go to Milton High, and they don't go to other schools for a lot of reasons. I mean, they go to other schools for a lot of reasons. But I've never run into a student who's gone to a private high school for a better music program. Maybe you have, but I have not. So I would just support the letter that you got from the co-chairs of fame. Hopefully, we can join with the other arts advocacy groups and come together and join on this discussion. But for the time being, I wanted you to hear from a parent that I'd like you to see, I'd like you to see this pipeline that ultimately creates these great middle and secondary programs. I'd see it opened. I wouldn't want to see it closed or restricted. So that's all I have to say. Thanks a lot for hearing me out.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hayward.
Next, I have Amy Delaney.
Can you hear me okay? I'm Amy Delaney, and I am also a parent of three children in the Milton Public Schools, a sixth-grade son, and two children at Colacott. And I actually am here just to follow suit to Ed, not knowing he was here as well, but just, I've also been a town meeting member for the last 10 years, so I understand the struggles with the budget year after year. I am very, I applaud you all for the three budgets that have presented, been presented so transparently. I'm really looking forward to town meeting in May to advocate for the schools. We see communities all around us that are cutting things left and right, and I really believe that the Milton Public Schools, the music program, arts, that the Milton Public Schools have supported is just outstanding. My son started playing violin in third grade, and he's an avid athlete and an avid student, but I think it was really in part due to the fact that he could play as part of a group with friends in fourth and fifth grade that made him a dedicated violinist as well. And moving ahead to Pierce, where there's such a huge sea of children there and such a huge group, it really is the one thing that has made him feel a part of a family and a part of something at Pierce. I have a daughter who's a fourth grader who played the violin for three years, and she, just in preparation to even be able to play band for Mr. Goode, has picked up percussion. So I just, I would, I know that you're working on this, and I know that it's in a second budget, but I would really urge you to try to preserve as much as possible the music programs. And I know the elementary school is where the cuts in the second budget were, but even just my son, because of playing in an elementary string ensemble, then went on to play at the New England Conservatory in a string training orchestra because of his experience with Mrs. Ostrom in the elementary level. And it's just such a gift, and I will tell you, in all of my work and all of my travels, when you say your children play music for the Milton Public Schools or sing for the Milton Public Schools, it's, you know, people just, you know, sort of hold their breath, and it has just such a reputation. So I would just urge you to keep working at it and see if those could be preserved. Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy.
Do we have anyone else for citizen speak? If you have a chance to sign up. If not, we'll move on to the rest of our meeting. First, the approval of the minutes of January 4th.
Move of approval.
Second, move by Mr. Walker. Second by Mr. Cahane. Any additions, comments, corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor? Opposed, standing, and it's unanimous. Now, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. I'd like to ask up, joining us tonight, the Pierce Middle School Site Council. Would you join us at the table? And I would ask Principal Jett to make introductions. Welcome. You've got a very eventful citizen speak you got to see tonight. Tales to tell tomorrow, good input going back into the school.
Tough to follow. I'm very surprised about my involvement. With a big beach bash.
Jett, would you make introductions?
First and foremost, James Jett, the principal of the Pierce Middle School. With me today is members of the Pierce Middle School Site Council, Jonathan Teresi, grade 8 history teacher. We have Jimmy Moonen, James Moonen, grade 6 math teacher. We have Amy Flanagan, parent. Amy Delaney, parent. And we have Andrew Bowles, who sits on our site council as an observer. But Andrew Bowles is the assistant principal at the Pierce Middle School, not with us this evening, but send their best. Is Lisa Viola, who's a parent. And also Amy, excuse me, Ann Murphy, who's a community member and former Pierce teacher that sits on the committee. Okay. Tonight, we're going to try to give a brief overall of our status in terms of our AYP status, and we'll talk a little bit about our school improvement plan and some of the initiatives that we're working on to kind of improve overall the academic experience for every child in the building. As many people may know already, and if you haven't, Pierce Middle School, currently their AYP status is restructuring year two for ELA. We made it in the aggregate. Unfortunately, we did not make it in the subgroup. The subgroup that we did not make it in, the subgroup that we did not make it in is students considered low income. However, I just want to mention to everyone in the public that is watching that we are very committed to trying to make sure that we reach that mark for all of our students. I will say this, last year, it was a plateau year, but we made that mark. This year, our level of expectation increased. So I always try to convey to parents or teachers, each year, we have a group that does not make it, and then you move on to the next year. They have to make up for what they missed and then some to reach that level. And as we talk about the student growth percentile as we move forward, you'll see some of the significant gains that we're making with our student population. As for math, we're in restructuring year two. And actually, I want to explain the restructuring year two status. Regardless of how we performed last year, because we were in that category last year, we could have had a stellar year where every single kid got a 280, and we still would have had that restructuring year two status, because you've got to go two consecutive years, making it not only in the aggregate, but in each of the subgroups. For the subgroups in math, we're students, special education, low income, and African-American students.
Can we turn to next? Yeah, please take.
Good evening, everyone. I'm just going to briefly go over the student growth percentile. This is a new measure in which the state is looking at individual students compared in the same cohort across the state. If you notice the three red circles, that's where the 6th, 7th, and 8th grade Pierce Middle School students are located across the state. If you notice, up in the top right-hand corner, it says "high growth and high achievement." So our 6th, 7th, and 8th grade students are meeting those growth and achievement markers based on the state's standards. But the big thing we want to explain is that even though we have the rigor in place, we want to exceed those expectations every year. If you notice on the chart specifically, the average growth is between 40 and 60 percentile points. The students are meeting those markers and exceeding. If you look on the bottom briefly, in the grade 6 math, the students reached 59, and 72% of the students were proficient and advanced in math. Grade 7, 61 percentage point increase. 74 students reached proficiency advanced. In grade 8, 66.5 students in 72% of the students reached proficiency or advanced status on the math MCAS last year. Obviously, once again, we set high expectations, but we want every year for those expectations to increase to reach the maximum achievement for all the students. Excited, please? So this is the growth model for the ELA. As you can see, we are pretty much moving forward as we like to see, between the 40 and 60 percentile. In grade 6, 79% of all the students reached proficient and advanced with a 55 student growth percentile. In grade 7, 50% reached the student growth percentile. And 86% of all the 7th grade students, that includes the long composition piece of the MCAS, reached proficient or advanced. And then grade 8, 62% of student growth model at 90% of advanced and proficient. And once again, this is a comparative across all the students in the state, how the students at the Pierce rate against the other students. So obviously, we're happy with the achievements of the students, but we want to move forward, going higher next year.
One of the things, before Mr. Phelan changes that slide, I want to bring to your attention, if you look at the progression of the kids, in grade 8, 90%, 90% of the students are proficient and advanced in the ELA. And we did not have one child in grade 8, one child on an IEP or anything that failed that test. So it was pretty good. And I think what that shows us is once kids come in the building, they access the curriculum, it does take time. I always use the analogy of running a marathon. Some kids, some people need a little more training than others, and sometimes the kids catch up. But our goal is to make sure as many kids as possible move up in every single bracket. If you're in warning, you move to needs improvement, needs improvement, you move to proficient and proficient, you move to advanced. And hopefully, if you're in advanced, we could reach that perfect 280 mark, which we'll talk about in a second. Thank you. This slide, I go through very quickly. The top, top, when we look at grade 6, this is the average number of points above the state average. Even though we're above the state average- if you look at the progression of the kids, in grade eight, 90%, 90% of the students are proficient and advanced in the ELA. And we did not have one child in grade eight, one child on an IEP or anything that failed that test. So it was pretty good. And I think what that shows us is, once kids come in the building, they access the curriculum, it does take time. I always use the analogy of running a marathon. Some kids, some people need a little more training than others, and sometimes the kids catch up. But our goal is to make sure as many kids as possible move up in every single bracket. If you're in warning, you move to needs improvement, needs improvement, you move to proficient and proficient, you move to advanced. And hopefully, if you're in advanced, we could reach that perfect 280 mark, which we'll talk about in a second. Thank you. This slide, I go through very quickly. The top, top, when we look at grade six, this is the average number of points above the state average. Even though we're above the state average, again, our goal is to push those numbers a lot higher. In every single category, we are above state average in math and in ELA, in all three grades. But again, the emphasis is on pushing this up a little higher. What they did, as far as the MCAS scores, they talk about CPI points. Again, the more kids we move from bracket to bracket, the more CPI points we have, and the better off our overall performance will be. And so that is our goal. We stay committed to it each and every year, but each and every year, you may have a different challenge. At the bottom, when we do comparison of student growth percentiles from the year 2010, the test in 2010 to the test in 2011, not to be confused with the academic year 2010, 2011, you see there is a significant, or there's an increase in terms of the student growth percentile, with the exception of the math in grade eight. The math in grade eight, it pretty much stayed relatively the same in terms of the student growth percentile, but I still want to let you know that we're making significant gains because that growth percentile is a comparison to districts across the state. And again, the average range is from 40 to 60, and we're pretty much in that average range or above. And the last thing on this slide that I thought was very compelling, over one-third, a little more than one-third, of all of the students in Pierce Middle School had a growth percentile of 80% or above. So what that is, for an example to help bring clarity to it, if James Jett scored 240 in 2010, when James Jett was compared to every kid across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts who scored 240, James Jett scored 80% higher, scored higher than 80% of the kids with that same score. So again, that tells us that something is working, and we need to speed up that pace. Next slide. This right here, math investigations, a few years back, the warrant committee was very generous with their funds, that allowed us to maintain a math investigation, which is a, in a math class, additional math class, in addition to their regular math class, to give students support. Again, to show you that the money is worth its weight, we had 38% of the students, they had a student growth percentile of 90 or above. That's very exceptional. We had 81% of the students with a student growth percentile of 70 or above. 35% of those students, now, this is important, because most of the kids that are in math investigation had a needs improvement. Now, 35% of those students made proficiency. That means that they moved from that needs improvement bracket to the proficient bracket. And 92% showed an increase in their score overall. So again, I want to let you know that the students in that class are making progress. We still have a ways to go. In fact, every student in the Pierce Middle School has a way to go. Yes?
I don't want to interrupt you, Mr. Jett. Would you explain about the math investigations? And that was, in fact, an additional teacher and two math classes. Would you explain it?
Absolutely. And we're talking a little bit more with the, when we talk, get further in the slide about the aim.
Hold on to it.
But math investigations, basically, we have two teachers that see students that come off team. Again, it's their second math class, to provide additional in-depth support and skill base to help kids with the concepts that they're learning in their class. So they give that reinforcement, but sometimes it's taught in a different way. Doesn't mean a better way, but a different way, and it gives them that extra time and that extra practice in that math investigations class. The class sizes are relatively anywhere from 10, and in some cases, up to 14, but the class sizes are relatively low, so you can meet the needs of each individual student. The grade seven, same thing, you see significant growth, 36%, of the students, 90 or above in terms of the SGP. 57 had an SGP of 70 or better, well above average, well above average for those kids in the math investigations. And 39% reached proficiency, again, moving up one bracket, going from needs improvement to proficiency, or in some cases, from warning, which was a failing score, to a proficiency. So it was a significant jump. And then 53% showed an increase in their score overall. Now, you may ask, why isn't sixth grade up there? The reason why sixth grade isn't up there, it's a different model for the sixth grade. Sixth graders take it every other day. And what happens is, we're getting students coming in from four different schools, and you're really trying to get a handle on it. We still pay attention to their scores, but we're really trying to hone in on the areas of weakness, but it does take a little time for the kids to get acclimated and adjusted. It's a huge adjustment. We often joke, grade six students have six core classes, so we don't want to hammer them with math investigations every day. Then that will put them in the bracket of having seven core classes. So we give them some support, and it may last for a period of time. Next slide. So this, this was a nice celebration that we had. Each year, each year, we had, we've had kids with a 280, which is the highest scale score that one could get on the MCAS. And we were very, very fortunate this year that we saw this leap go up a little bit more. Now, if you notice to the right, or the top one, where it says 48 students had, 48 students with a 280 in math, and it says five through eight, we counted the fifth grade because we also deleted the eighth grade. So we didn't want to double dip. So we just took the kids that we were going to be responsible for this year. But we have kids that have moved up to the high school level with a 280 score, and that's why you see the little asterisk at the bottom. But we had 48 students in math with a 280. We had 25 students with a 280 in English, and then we had three students with a 280 in science. Now, what I found was interesting, we had a couple of students who had 280s in both subjects, and believe it, and one student in grade eight, I think it was, Mr. Ed in grade eight had math and ELA, and then his younger brother in grade six had a 280 in all three subjects, math, science, and in ELA. That was, I would like to be in that household. And all students were recognized as a celebration. If we could go to the next slide, Mr. Phelan. What we try to do is, we try to inspire, and I think it's actually working. Each year, we made an announcement in the cafeteria, the kids will be recognized in the library with a special luncheon. And each year, we said we'd like to see more and more kids reach that or make that accomplishment. And each year, we've seen the numbers grow. To give you an example, combined last year, I think we had 31 kids total with a 280. As you can see from the last slide, that number increased significantly.
Mr. Phelan, next slide.
So when we start breaking down our student, our school improvement plan, we broke it down into categories. The first category we talked about is high academic achievement for all, and we talked about re-aligning, realigning the math curriculum for many last year. Amy Gale, myself, Dr. Drata, Michelle Cruzer, several people came up and did a presentation on math. But I'm going to turn it over to Jimmy Moonin to talk a little bit about some of the math curriculum changes that we had that were working towards student achievement.
Hi, my name's Jim Moonin. Thank you for having me tonight. I'm here to speak about what we're doing as a, as a math department, not only at the Pierce Middle School, but as, in the Milton Public Schools, to really make sure that we're ready to make sure that each kid is ready for Algebra, Algebra I in eighth grade, and ready for the Common Core standards, which are going to take place starting next year, the 2012 academic year. One thing that we're doing, starting in grade six, and actually, all the way back to the elementary school, is that we're really taking a proactive approach to it. We saw that the changes were going to have to be made because the standards were changing, and rather than seeing what the changes could be, we're anticipating what they're going to be, and we're starting to make changes, starting last year, actually. This year, in the sixth grade, we have a new textbook, and the textbook is outstanding. It's Prentice-Hall Course Two, I mean, McDougal-Latell Course Two. Last year, we were using the Prentice-Hall Course One book, and this book is outstanding. It really, it matches up perfectly with the new Common Core standards. It's more challenging, and it also has a lot more real-world applications. And this year, we're already seeing a lot of improvements with all of our students. Another thing that we're doing is, this past summer was the first summer that all students at the Pierce Middle School were required to do summer math on top of summer reading. And coming into the school year, the students were really ready just to get into math, when in past years, we've noticed that we would have to spend a few weeks really going over some of the basics to kind of, just to kind of get them into a groove. And we noticed that this year, since the kids were doing math throughout the summer, that they, that we really were able to hit stride pretty early. Another thing that we have this year is, starting last year, and I know Mr. Jett will speak about it later, is the Study Island program. And the Study Island program also matches up with the new Common Core standards, and that can speak to the sixth grade alone, in the month of January, answered over 40,000 questions and spent over 400, close to 400 hours on the program. And that's just, that's on top of, that's basically on their own.
And if I could add a piece to that, we started off right after the holidays with a healthy challenge, grade six, grade seven, and then grade eight. Team Bowles, Team Jett, Team McReynolds, we made the announcement in the cafeteria. I think it's important to say, not only the number of hours, and not only the number of questions, but out of 46,000 questions, 83% accuracy, 83% accuracy. So that's extra practice on top of what the students are doing within the classroom, which I think is amazing. If you're ever in the Pierce, right across from the elevator, we do monthly challenges, and those challenges with the goals will be stated on big poster boards right on the bulletin. And so kids get to see it, and it's kind of healthy peer pressure, healthy challenges, and kids are really getting excited about it.
So I just wanted to. Thank you. We're also with the Pierce Middle School, we're doing a lot more project-based learning, and the goal of that is to really reach all learners. There's a lot of kids in math who, who don't think they're math people, who don't enjoy math, but once we incorporate projects, you really see another, another student, and they, they really take great pride in their work, and you see, and students are really able to learn better through project-based learning. In the sixth grade, we do a favorite number project, which we've already done. We do a data analysis project in the spring, and we also do a recipe project at some point in the year. And the goal of these is really to reach all learners. We also have done an immense amount of professional development in the past couple of years to get, to get our students ready, to get our school system ready for the changes that are going to be made. I think Mr. Phelan walked in, I think we're, on Veterans Day it was, and there was a, you know, there was a group of eight to 10 math teachers just staying there on Veterans Day, talking about how we can incorporate more writing in our math curriculum. So it really is a, it's a focused group of teachers and a really ambitious math program. We also, this past fall, the sixth grade math teachers and some other math teachers went to a seminar at Bridgewater State College to learn more about the Common Core curriculum. And it was here where I really felt that we, the Milton Public Schools are ahead of the curve when it comes to the new Common Core standards. We've already developed seven common assessments for grade six that are all aligned with the Common Core, the new Common Core standards, and we're going to actually pilot them this spring to a few students and see how they work. So that's something that we're very excited about. In conclusion, I really think that, you know, our math department, and it starts in the elementary school, is absolutely heading in the right direction, and I think that we're in a position where we, we're always looking for ways to improve. And, you know, the Common Core and the Course One and the Course Two, it's exciting. I know the math department's excited about it, and I think that the community should be excited for these changes as well.
Hi, thank you. So I'm going to speak briefly about the common assessments that have been developed. Since entering Milton Public Schools seven years ago, Stephanie Nefy, when she was a former humanities coordinator, the kind of push to develop common assessments had kind of been something that was present and part of our bimonthly curriculum meetings. And through the implementation of the Common Core, the departments have continued to work to infuse those standards in our documents and our assessments so that everything is lined up properly. Now, in terms of history and science, the state has not exposed content-specific standards, it's more skill-based. So within the humanities department, we're focusing heavily on the skills, infusing those skills and ensuring that our instructional strategies and methods of assessment are helping develop the skills necessary for 21st century Common Core implementation. So I think we've really taken some positive steps, and really, again, as Mr. Moonin said, being ahead of the curve and proactive with these bimonthly curriculum meetings, it really affords us the time to carry through these initiatives. And it is definitely a priority and something that I've continued to work on with my colleagues in the history department, and have seen the benefit through these common assessments, being able to really sit down and look at student work and kind of see, what is the common knowledge that is being taught? And what are, what, an eighth grader in the Pierce Middle School, what are they leaving with, from the history department? What are they leaving with? What is the common set of knowledge and skills that they possess? And I think that's really valuable as they move on to the high school, and the teachers kind of get that sense as to what is the common set of knowledge here. So I think these are some very collegial discussions that are taking place, and I feel very happy with the direction we're going in our, in our department meetings with that.
So if you look at the third bullet, benchmark text, testing to determine reading levels in grade six, the Lexile program, basically, this is testing kids' reading ability, not grade level, but reading ability. All kids have that testing in grade six, and then it'd be a follow-up for students that fall short, be below a certain range. And the goal is to kind of link it with ability, but also personal interest. It's still underway, we're still in the process of trying to work that out, but the overarching theme is, the goal is to try to get the common assessments, benchmarks in all grades and all content areas, and our hope is that you're discovering areas of weaknesses and accentuating on the strengths prior to any statewide testing, whether it be MCAS in grade six, seven, or eight. So the earlier we catch the kids, not only in the elementary level, but month by month, the earlier we catch those weaknesses, it gives us a little more time to bolster up some of those areas. L A S W, that means looking at student work. Thank you. Looking at student work. And a lot of this work is done through the biweekly curriculum meetings. The teachers get together by content area, grade level, and they're talking about it. But we know we have a challenge to trying to get sixth grade to see, seventh grade, seventh grade to see eight, and eight to six. And that's a challenge within our schedule, but we're committed to looking at different ways on which we could do that. So although we're talking about some of the great things that we have, I don't want to mislead you, we still have a ways to go. But again, we have an energized staff, or faculty and staff that are committed to doing that. And then again, using MCAS data and classroom data, we talked a little bit about that. Creation of the accelerated initiative in mathematics, that's AIM. We have a lot of supports for our kids that are, that need support, whether it's through special education or kids that are just struggling learners. But this program, I thought, was unique because it gives kids in the above level, who, who may be teetering a little bit, that need that extra support and in-depth content knowledge in the above level. So again, trying to push kids a little higher. It goes back to that comment, if we have kids in proficient category, we want them to be in advanced. Math is a slam dunk. That's a partnership with Pinnacle Learning and Steve Shapiro, who is, is, obviously, his son Lucas was up here this evening talking about that. His wife Mary is a math teacher at the Pierce. But again, he's working right now with approximately 150 kids in grades four through six at the Pierce Middle School on a Saturday. I would encourage you, if you have the opportunity to stop by and see the wonderful work that the kids are doing, in addition to math, they have enrichment in art, they're playing basketballs, and the kids are loving that experience. And he's a seasoned veteran in working and giving the kids the support that they need, and I want to thank all the parents who signed their kids up for that, because we think it would be beneficial in the long run. Study Island, we talked a little bit about it. We're encouraging kids to get on Study Island. We do have a license for science as well. We hope more kids get on it for science. We, we want to provide that value system for them to make sure that they see it as an important asset for them, and the same thing for our ELA. So excellence in the classroom, again, rigorous curriculum design, classroom embedded, professional development. We have a couple of teachers that are working on some outstanding collaborative projects. We have Jen Gilbert, who is a grade eight science teacher, working with Tina Mahon, who is a speech and language pathologist, and they're looking at reading ability and how that plays out in the science classes. All those different things that we think that are happening in small pockets, we need to start highlighting them, and so we get more people on board and more people doing those. Biweekly curriculum meetings that are led by department heads, again, that gives them opportunity to look at class, work, I mean, student work. That gives them opportunity to discuss strengths and weaknesses of the curriculum and where they need to change. And again, I apologize for the redundancy, but the assessments and benchmarks we talked about. Next slide, Mr. Phelan. Collaborative relationships. I'm going to skip down, and I want to talk about the parent piece. I have Amy Flanagan and Amy Delaney, who sat in last month's Site Council meeting, and I thought they brought unique perspectives to the Site Council. I thought their ideas were great. They challenged, through their comments, they may not realize this, but after that meeting, Mr. Teresi, Mr. Moonin, myself talked about it. And the very next morning, I'm calling Mary, Mary Gormley and John Philin to talk about some of the ideas, and I would give them opportunity just to talk about their experience from a parent engagement piece and how they see things at Pierce. engagement piece and how they see things at Pierce.
Hi, I'm Amy Flanagan. Can you hear me?
Yep.
I don't know if you want to hear about the, the parent experience at Pierce or the experience with the site council. I have to say, the experience with the site council has been unbelievable. We had one meeting and literally twenty-four hours later, started hearing, not from these guys, but from around town, changes that had already started to be made. So I was, when Mr. Jet told us about this meeting tonight, I was so excited to come here because I'm like, wow, this is just really a committee that's making some changes. And we did talk a lot about parent involvement and, and they, you know, the meeting was, that was their agenda. And we obviously have two sixth grade students, so that was something that was big on our mind. And we were bringing the voices of our peers, who are also coming into the school with sixth grade students. And the overwhelming concern maybe feeling was that when you come to Pierce, the parent involvement piece is a huge puzzle. Like, parents don't even really know where they're supposed to land. You go from fifth grade, where you're in the classroom every other day and you're constantly being asked for tissues and to come in and teach science, to sixth grade, where it kind of feels like this castle with the closed doors, and you're not sure when you're supposed to be involved and when you're supposed to let your child have his or her wings. So it's, it's really a challenge for us because I think most parents want to do the right thing and want to talk to the teacher where appropriate and want to be involved where it's going to be helpful. But also, we're still learning, you know, is the sixth grader ready to handle this on their own? Or how do they get to eighth grade, ninth grade where they are? So we talked a lot about ideas about getting parents together, both with the teachers and parents together with other parents as a team. And there seemed to be a lot of great ideas. And I'll let, I talk a lot, so I'm going to let Amy take over from here.
The site council meeting that we had last month was, you know, for first coming in, I had actually volunteered to sit on site council to actually get in the building and actually, you know, feel that I could voice what I felt and actually just meet Mr. Jet. And, you know, just being at Calicut and running PTO up at school, you know, I just concur with Amy is that you really, it's sort of this, you know, Pierce to me is this just amazing school and our children have had just wonderful transitions to sixth grade. Teachers available before school, after school, at lunchtime, you know, knowing your child feels that every single person at Pierce wants them to be successful. But, you know, it is a proven fact that parent involvement makes kids even more successful. And so it's sort of this unclear message, you know, what is the mission of Pierce and parental involvement? So, you know, there was some great ideas that, you know, we sort of talked about as sort of maybe, again, not, we're so grateful not to have to be up at school every day running art programs and do, I mean, believe me, we, you know, we're already there still on the elementary level. But, you know, really opening the doors at the school to actually allow parents to come in, to come in and meet other families that their kids are in school with. Even myself, in my own experience, being at Pierce just for meetings and my son knowing that, you know, Mr. Jet might know who he is, or that, you know, a parent is actually physically in the school at times and might know his or her teachers, you just see them at ease a little bit more. So a few of the things that we talked about was really trying to define the parent's role up at the middle school. The balance of opening the doors and having families there, but also allowing kids independence and not being in teachers' faces, because they have so much work they need to do. Opening the doors of the school maybe, and I know that Mr. Jet has talked to the faculty about maybe opening the doors to have, you know, just an open parent coffee with the administration, to actually be, you know, come in, see the school, talk to the administration. We talked a lot about the clubs that are offered after school and the kids, the new, the, the sixth graders coming in really not knowing what those clubs are even about. So maybe even having some type of open house early in the fall for students to actually present, you know, what their club does and for the parents to be able to come in with Pierce students and sort of be able to say like, oh, wow, this is what the bell, you know, the handbell choir does, and this is what this does. Because they're all just amazing club programs that are offered. We're working on a career day, which will also, I think, be great for parents that may want to come into the school and talk about how proud they are of their careers and really get middle school students to start to think about what they like and what they may want to do with their future. And, you know, we talked a lot about maybe having even the teams and faculty communicate and share amongst each other about how they communicate with families, because there is a little bit of an inconsistency amongst teams about how they actually communicate with families. So, and I thought that, I don't want to speak for the faculty, but everybody was just, you know, saying, oh, well, you know, I didn't know that that team did that, and maybe we should just more, because I'm sure every faculty meeting is just inundated with business and, you know, working so hard with really just what they need to do with the students, but sharing ideas amongst team faculty. The other thing that I spoke about, which I don't know, Mr. Jet, if you, I won't go into detail with, is, you know, possibly looking at middle school sports. And I feel very strongly about this because in a school that is so huge, really, there are children up there that feel that they are not a part of anything. And so for a student to actually even just put on a shirt with their teammates or a bib and to play on a team with their friends and with their fellow students, it really just promotes the sense of community and sense of belonging. And I'm sure that the high school would love it to sort of have a feeder program into high school sports. So I, I feel there was a lot of things we talked about from a parent's standpoint and change, discussion has started to happen. And it really, to us as parents, has made a big difference, just having folks listen and also feeling that we're not complaining too much because we just love Pierce. We love what they're doing for our students.
Thank you.
I just want to say one other thing, because next week when I'm up, or next meeting when I'm talking citizen speaking, begging you not to cut a science teacher in the high school. I just want you to say that all the parents are very, also very concerned about the science program going up. And they're, and as a sixth grade student, we hear the ninth grade parents saying like that hitting high school in ninth grade is like really hard. And I have to say, I have a sixth grade science student, and his teacher's name is hard to say, so I'm going to try it, Hoy Cianos?
Hoy Cianos.
Hoy Cianos. And his experience with her has been phenomenal. He tells me, it doesn't feel like a class, it feels like an activity. He came home today or yesterday and they were doing, and he was talking so fast, I don't even know what they were doing, but it was something about tectonic plates and sections and hands-on science and, and that kind of thing. And the reason I bring that up is, first of all, again, with parent involvement, parents start to realize how important that is. And it comes all the way full circle, so they start bidding things at the MFE auction because they know how important the hands-on science is. And also, I don't know who's responsible. I know Ms. Hoy Cianos went to the Grand Canyon or learned some amazing thing about the Grand Canyon, and now I don't get my beach vacation because my kids want to go to the Grand Canyon. But it's working and the kids are excited and, you know, anything we can to improve the science is great. So thank you for that.
And if I could just add to that, the, the message here that I would hope that people take, that are watching, is that it doesn't matter how big or small an idea is, if there's a concern, if there's a suggestion, it's an email, it's a phone call, it's a pop and visit. And I agree, Amy, the two Amys and Lisa, they had some very good ideas. And we have to be open, and, and I don't look at it as a negative, I think it's great constructive criticism. And through that, we started talking about having a Saturday coffee for parents to accommodate their schedules. We're talking about team events, to talk to parents, to kind of meet and greet, similar to what the Aquarius team does now, two years running, where they have a potluck dinner and they invite their parents in. So there's great things that are happening, we just need to do a better job promoting those. And hopefully, we could have them a little more widespread. One more initiative I want to talk about on this page, and we talked already about it, but we talked, am I on the right one? Next page, I'm sorry. Oh, go back, I'm sorry. We, we have a couple of different things that we do within-house. We, we also have a consultant right now, Guy Roy. He's a math specialist. He actually worked on the frameworks. He's in our building, working with all of our math teachers. He comes in periodically, he was just in there the other day. I had a conversation with Jimmy Moonen, a couple of other math teachers, they love his work, great demeanor. He has the expertise, that in-depth knowledge, and he sees the end game, in which we hope to kind of give our teachers that experience. So he could give us that, that little push, that little plug to let us know what we need to do a little differently. He comes with a wealth of knowledge and, and outstanding experience. So I just wanted to put that out there as well. Now, respect for human differences, I'm going to go through this very quickly, because I think it's important. We just wanted to list a couple of things. We have a mentoring program. Once again, twenty faculty and staff volunteering their time. I hate to put them on the spot, Jonathan Teresi and Mr. Moonen themselves are mentors, they're working with students, and it doesn't need to be a student on your grade, it doesn't need to be a student that's in academic danger. It could be a student that's doing exceptionally well, but we just need them to get involved a little more socially, take on leadership skills. So it runs the gamut in terms of who gets that experience. We acknowledge kids, student of the month. Last week, we recognized the no-name-calling, not only Dave, we extended it to the week. Rachel's challenge we had in the beginning of the year. A lot of these anti-bullying initiatives to make sure that Pierce Middle School becomes a bully-free zone, and hopefully that branches out to Milton Public Schools and then to the community. Friends of Rachel Group, grade six guidance counselor, Erin McCurton, she took that on, that's an extension of Rachel's challenge. And it's, it's all about the positive vibes. And our message is, we don't put people down, we lift people up. And we hope that that's an overall theme that kids walk away from. Mr. Teresi spearheading, along with our diversity group, the global celebration, that's bringing in everyone in the school, making people feel a part of a family. I think as much as Mrs. Delaney talks about students feeling connected, I think it extends to families as well. We want them to feel connected to the school. Talked a little bit, very briefly, about a Saturday coffee hour that we hope to have in the month of March. Mr. Teresi and I just had a meeting, called an emergency meeting today. We're hoping to get that off the ground as well. Families Helping Families, that was our holiday initiative, making sure that we take care of some of our own. High Five Wall, that's recognizing students for acts of kindness. Again, acknowledge, promote, a, a nice positive culture, anti-bullying curriculum that is intertwined in each of our content areas. Milton Teens Helping Teams, that was a collaboration with the Milton Residence Fund. And student council initiatives, right now, this week, we're doing a can drive, can and food drive, that's to support the Milton Food Pantry. We have a very good relationship with them. And then there's two initiatives on there. It doesn't necessarily talk about human differences, but I thought it would be a compelling thing to put up there because I know as a school committee, you're looking at a social networking policy. And as part of our mock trial, that's what are the, the cases that they will be looking at. So again, I don't know how that's going to play out. We hope that that's an issue, we're trying to follow and see if we could get some good things in the media. Hopefully, nothing from Milton, maybe another community, but we could look at.
Or maybe you could have the school committee members who are working on that policy be guest speakers for the students.
That's a great idea.
When they're preparing for that trial.
Who do you want to nominate?
Guest observers might be a better idea.
And then our future problem solvers, as Mrs. Flanagan referred to, Nicole Hoy Cianos, she's the lead on the future problem solvers, and our kids are about to back up on a competition. So we look forward to some of these initiatives. Next phase. So risk-taking and innovation. The piloting of the FOS program, that's a science program, that's full option science system, that's more inquiry-based, hands-on science. It's really promoting kids to think. It's no longer opening the book, have the definitions, go to the bold face word and then write it down. It's really asking kids to think. So they have a topic question or the big idea, they, that's introduced at the beginning of class, students write about it, and then they engage in a lab. And then they come back. And now, so when they write about it before they engage in a lab, they're accessing their prior learning. What do they know about this topic beforehand? And then when they go through the lab, they come back, okay, so what did you discover that you, you thought you knew? How accurate were you? What were the differences? What have you learned? And getting kids really to, really to write about it and write out their thoughts. And then the realignment of the math curriculum, that is a huge risk to say to every single kid at Pierce Middle School, regardless of their academic ability, by grade eight is going to have a full-year exposure of Algebra I in grade eight. So that is taking a risk. But we have some very dedicated staff members that are willing to work towards that. And then the development of performance-based Common Assessments, grade six, excuse me, grade seven geography, moving away from the multiple choice, really allowing kids to elaborate on what they know, really having them think and, and promote their thoughts. Next. So again, this is just, this is just a follow-up. It's almost like a summary, the next two pages are some of the things that we're doing. We like to continue all of the initiatives, continue to provide opportunities for families to engage, that was huge, we heard that very loud and clear. And we know the site council is a small microcosm of the community, the Pierce community as a whole. But we think it's, if a couple of people are feeling that way, we're sure more people are feeling that way. So what do we need to do to get out there and promote that? Continue to provide, you know, opportunities for students to be engaged in after-school clubs. We talked about a sporting program. If we could go to the next slide, oh, and our career day, May twenty-four. So hopefully, you guys will all get that, we'll make sure that the school committee members get that. And this is just, again, the benchmark testing, increased parent involvement, specific training. Oh, that's huge. Our instructional aids, again, Nicole Hoy Cianos, grade six teachers working with Amy Gale. We know we have parent professionals in the school system, working with some of our students need, what can they do better to give them professional development, to be an extension of the teacher within the classroom, to support those students. So that, that is something that they're working on, continue with the Study Island, and continue to improve upon our investigations class in our AIM program. So in closing, you know, I thank all of you for your support. Again, we know that Pierce has its challenges, we're committed to it, but I got to say, the positives and the highlights far outweigh some of those challenges. We're not neglecting them, we're working on them head-on, and hopefully, we'll see some significant improvement in our scores. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Mr. Walker?
So, the first thing I'd like to say is, that was a very impressive presentation. And I think, I, I like the fact that you're getting out in front of some of the areas where the Common Core standards, where the state hasn't provided specific content, that's, that's very smart. I like the fact that it seems like, particularly in the math area, you have different strategies for students that are above level, students that need even more support. But, but you know, the thing that's most impressive is that, and this is to Ms. Delaney and Ms. Flanagan as well, you sound like a team. You sound like a team that's got a strategy where you're talking, you're collaborating, and, and that's, that's the most impressive thing. Particularly because I think at the middle school level, that's where we start to find out whether some of the groundwork that we've done, we find out with a lot more clarity whether that's working. And you've got a unique challenge. So I, I commend all of you. I have just one general question, one specific question. The general question is, how can we help? I mean, I'm, I'm excited just listening to the presentation. What can we do?
First things, continue to support the schools so we're not facing any cuts. And to your point, I do want to give credit to the, for elementary principals as well because they're doing some outstanding work, that's a feeder system for us. And we hope that Joe Arangio and the high school staff feel the same about us moving kids forward. Because I, it doesn't start at the middle school. We're only as good as the kids that we're getting in, in sixth grade and working with them and continuing to mold them. And so they're doing outstanding work. So for the support, getting the word out, if there's a concern to parents, not everything is appealing to everyone, but we open the doors and welcome people to come in and give suggestions. It's very easy to be critical, but it's a little harder to give us a suggestion with that criticism as well.
Well, I, I particularly encourage Ms. Flanagan and Ms. Delaney, keep doing what you're doing. That's exactly the model, and you said it, when parents are more involved, all good things happen. So keep at it. The, the specific question is, on the math investigations program, at the grade eight level, nine out of ten students improve their scores, at the grade seven level, one out of two. That's a, that's a pretty significant difference. What, how would you account for that and what did you learn from that?
Very good question. The mock moves each year, again, the way that it works with the kids in investigations, if you, if you look at it, we talked about thirty-five percent of the kids reach proficient level. So those kids will no longer be in the math investigations. So we could have a whole new group, because each year the trajectory changes a little bit. So if the kids fall below a certain threshold, that's who we offer it. So it's just like trying to look at MCAS scores from year to year, I think you really need to follow the cohort.
The challenges are driven by the, the content of the cohort.
And in some cases, it is, it's a moving target in some cases. But our goal is, that's why we look at individual... But our goal is, that's why we look at individual student growth percentile because now that gives us information on that individual student and how they're progressing year to year. So, say for instance, if I needed to reach ten this year and I only reached seven. Next year, I need to reach fifteen. Now, my leap to achieve that level that they set by the state is a lot higher. And it's a test that's one grade higher as well. It's not like they're being tested on the same test. So, in grade six, they don't get that grade six test again. Now, they're grade seven. And so, we're constantly trying to build up that foundation, the skill foundation, to make sure that the kids get there.
Great. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Of course, you know how much I love Pierce, Mr. Jett, right? I mean, it's a great school. Both my kids went there. People ask me, oh, yes, absolutely, Pierce and High School have been fabulous experience. I didn't hear much about the team model and I'm assuming it's still in place.
Team model is still in place, absolutely.
Because that was something that was really helpful to my kids when they were at Pierce. So, I think that that's something really important.
To explain the team model, for those who don't know, in grade eight, it's math. Grade eight and seven, it's math, science, English, geography/history. And what it does, it allows for four of those teachers to come together. They teach the same five periods. They have two planning periods off. That allows them to do the curriculum meeting, allows them the opportunity to meet with parents, to discuss students. And sometimes when they don't have meeting, they're collaborating on interdisciplinary activities and projects. And then just talking about students in general. So, as a parent, having your child in that team model, you, they really get to know your kids. It's not a knock against the high school, but they're departmentalized. So, you may not necessarily have the math teacher talking to the English teacher or the English teacher talking to the science teacher. Whereas in the middle school, you're really, it makes the big schools smaller and it makes the experience a little more, really getting in, honing in on the individual student.
Go ahead.
Sorry. And one other thing that we've done is infusing a co-taught model where there's been special educators and with the English and math teachers co-teaching. So, it really allows us to have more of a full inclusion model. And having that co-taught model, I think we've really seen some strides in our MCAS scores. Part of this growth percentile progress, I think, can be attributed to this co-taught model. Kids are getting more individualized attention. So, in addition to the team model, infusing that co-taught, I think, has really helped us kind of move forward as well with that.
And to expand on Mr. Teresi's remarks, the public and the school committee understands that the co-taught is, model is at the Glover and the Tucker kindergarten through grade five. Two teachers in kindergarten first, second and third, and then a regular teacher and a sped certified teacher all day. And then at fourth and fifth grade, the sped teacher, the teacher with special education certification, is only there half a day. So, when this first cohort in grade of co-taught children were moving to the middle school, Mr. Jett and Mr. Phelan did a tremendous amount of work with their parents, communicating with them because they had had this model. And what Mr. Jett and the Special Education Department has perfected, that the co-taught model, team teaching, is in the English and math. And again, the finance subcommittee has asked us, if budgets weren't a constraint, where would we go? Well, you have paraprofessionals in the area of science. But again, we know that that's an area that's tested. If we could expand to the two teachers, but right now, funding only allows. But the models work to Mr. Teresi's comments and the support that you give in social studies and science. Again, not with the sped certified teacher, am I correct, Mr. Jett? But with a paraprofessional in the area of science. You're making strides and you're working with the staff that you have. But that model for the Milton Public Schools has set up again for students to stay in the Milton Public Schools, to experience success. And I tell the story that last year, wasn't it in the area of math? The fifth grade co-taught classroom had the highest math scores in the district. So, the model's working. Parents are requesting now at the elementary level to have their children in a, children from regular education without special needs in that class.
And I think, I'm sorry, in the history and science classrooms as well as a history teacher, I think, you know, if that model's been effective to find ways and be creative to try to infuse that and having some support in my classrooms as well as a history teacher, if that model's working in other two subjects, you know, to look at the possibilities of infusing that as well. And I think we can see further strides as a history teacher, having support with literacy with some of our struggling learners and having that support as well. I think we'll continue to make more strides in the ELA area as well, having that kind of come full circle.
Can I just finish?
Please.
So, it's great to see the growth, but I'm a little confused, or I'm not confused, but if you could explain to the public about, on page two, where it says restructuring year two, can you explain to the public what that means as compared to the growth model, the growth that you've shown us?
Yes. Restructuring year two, that just means that we were identified, we were tagged, not necessarily in our aggregate, but in our subgroups. What happens is they test everybody. Every single student in the Pierce Middle School, sixth, seventh and eighth grade, they get tested. So, we have close to a hundred and fifty kids tested last year. So, what happens, in the aggregate, we made the mark that the state set. In some of our subgroups, as I alluded to in ELA, students in low income did not make the mark. Keep in mind, that low-income status could shift year by year. So, last year, we could've worked on a group and then because of the economy, some people now have fallen in that bracket. So, the kids that you, you know, so the market's always shifting and it goes back to my point. And then in the math, same thing. We made it in the aggregate, but we didn't make it in the area of subgroup. And I'm actually glad you brought this up because when I say we're tagged in students of color, special education, in low income, I could be James Jett and I could be in all three of those buckets. So, it may appear that it's a lot of kids in different buckets, but it could be a small pocket of kids that fall in all three of those buckets.
If I could expand on that. So, again, looking at the achievement gap and achievement and data, all of the elementary schools made AYP and all of the subgroups. But at three of our elementary schools, we don't have a group of forty students in the low income. But when you gathered all those names district-wide, they picked us up. And so, I've given out the names of those children so that, I said to the principals, you have to make sure that in slam dunk, in any kind of support programs we have, because what are we going to wait until those particular children don't get the supports and don't, and fail next year? So, we've distributed those names and it's kept confidential. But we wanna make sure, again, the state's identifying those children, that we give them every single support we can and set them up to succeed, just as we do, you know, children with special needs. We make sure that they have the supports and they're, again, given assessments all through the years, all through the school year, so that you set them up to succeed on MCAS and any other test they're given.
And if I could just add one more thing to your question. Even though it shows in our AYP status that we did not meeting, it doesn't mean those subgroups aren't showing gains every year. So, every year, the state gets higher and higher and higher until 2014 when the expectation is a hundred percent proficiency. But every year, we're looking at those students as the overall aggregate and subgroup and saying, look, there's substantial gains in these groups because we look then at the student growth model and see those gains where students are reaching seventy-five, eighty, ninety percent student growth percentile increases. And that's showing us on the individual students basis. So, even though the AYP status says no, there are gains being made in those subcategories.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Sheridan.
Thank you so much for that wonderful presentation. James, something you said really struck a chord with me and I think it ran throughout the whole presentation. You said that we don't put people down, we lift people up. And that might be a motto for our high fives on the wall, but it came through loud and clear that that is your motto across the school, whether it's dealing with parents, whether it's camaraderie between the departments, the leadership team. It just, it just rang so true to me through everything that you said. And a school is so much more than that MCAS data. And all that's gonna change when the Common Core comes and the MCAS changes itself in a couple of years. So, the work that you're doing day-to-day is just so important. The parents having that collaborative relationship, it's already there. I mean, you had that on one of your pages, but it could've been on every page because when you speak about math or history, you know what each other is doing. And that's what the Pierce school is. That's what the team, you know, motto has always been. And I just think it continues and it's so exciting to see. I just wanna speak about one thing because you did talk about sports and that's great. I'm so excited about a middle school sport, but it already started this year because there's a middle school wrestling team and I know because my son's been volunteering with them. But it's just, it's so great to think that that could come back to the middle school and see that grow again. So, keep up the good work and thank you for a wonderful presentation.
You have one? Go ahead.
The summer math and the project-based learning, is this the first year of it?
Excuse me?
The summer math and project-based learning in math, is that the first year?
It was the first year for the summer math, yes. And we've been doing project-based learning, but we're, we've been altering the projects and adding projects year to year.
Have you seen any increase in test scores after the summer math, in the subgroups in particular?
This is the first year, this is the first school year that the kids have entered with math. So, overall with the students, we have seen, it was a smoother transition into the school year. A lot of times, and the base, the reason that we came out with the summer math package is we found that oftentimes, students were going through the summer. They were going through two straight months without doing a single math problem. You know, I don't blame them. I probably wouldn't have either. But now, when they're going to do that, they're gonna, when they're forced to do it, they have to, when they're required to do it, they have to do math and they have to do a certain amount of problems each week. So, the material is, you know, staying fresh in their minds and we're able to get into a smooth transition with the school year.
If I could just add to that, yeah, I see a huge increase. We talk about a new student, ELL, that we just got this year, ELL, English Language Learner. That student has actually done this month the most problems. That student also won actually the spelling bee. So, again, you're making strides with the different subgroups of the population that I think that is making a huge difference. And so, I definitely see some gains. We may not see it necessarily in the MCAS, but you see it in the student self-esteem and you see how they function day-to-day.
One more quick comment. I was really glad to see you did the acts of kindness and the varied categories for student of the month. I mean, it's great you do the two-eighty, but the kids who make real growth in the MCAS or make real growth in their behavior are probably the kids that need to pull along even more than the kids who make the two-eighty, but I'm glad you do both. So, I was glad to hear that you do both and I think that that's really important. And then another goal I think is really important is how do you bridge and partner with Milton High School in terms of grade eight going to the grade nine, as well as parent development. Makes you see the high school in terms of parent involvement, it's a little bit different, but you're still involved. But I think one way to do that is with the Walk-a-Thon. Grade eight students are invited. Last year was the first year we invited grade eight students and it was to give them a chance to see what the high school is like and to feel like they're a part of something. And also because it's actually for grade nine sports and clubs, so grade eight students have to help with that. And parents can come and volunteer for that. So, it's another way for parents to be involved. But I do feel concerned, not concerned, but I do wish we had more partnering or bridging with the high school. And I know we have some, but I think it's a really important leap from grade eight to grade nine.
To your point, Steve Traister and several of the members that spoke this evening was down at the Pierce Middle School talking to the entire eighth grade class last week. Dr. Arangio in Yolanda Beach and Alan Cron at the Pierce Middle School as we speak, speaking to parents as part of the PTO. So, you're absolutely right. We need to do more of that. I think the Milton Public Schools provides an excellent product. We need to do a better job promoting that, not only to parents and Milton Public School students, but also the community as a whole. I know we do a great job, but we could always improve.
And actually, next week, the eighth grade history teachers were going to Milton High School on a learning walk and we're gonna meet with Barbara Wright and the ninth grade history teachers to discuss vertical alignment and the transitioning of curriculum. And I know that's happening, I think, in other subjects as well, but it's very important.
In closing, in Happenings, I was gonna recognize the Pierce players and the guys and dolls and so, it's appropriate that you're here. It was unbelievable. It took my breath away. I think Glenn Pavlichek and I signed eight hundred letters. Were there eight hundred children involved in that play?
I gotta tip, it was a little more than a hundred of the cast and crew.
Wow. I know there were more than a hundred letters then.
We signed sixty each.
I would love to sit and try to take an ounce of credit for that.
Can I say it again?
Bill Deschain does, along with Jeanne Willow, Sue McKay with the costumes, Gingy Grimes, the pianist.
They do a remarkable job bringing those kids together. To see where they go from September, and there were a lot of sixth graders in that class. There are a lot of students that have challenges academically, but when they perform, unbelievable. So, kudos to the Pierce players. A big shout-out to the students who really dedicated a lot of time and their parents for allowing them to be a part of that because as you got closer to the play, it was three to four hours a night.
Deschain and to Bill Deschain. It's unbelievable. Does he start on the next one now?
No, he started on the next one last, about a month ago, about a month ago. So, yeah, he's already, he's already started on the next one. In fact, they have a big rehearsal next week.
Well, to Mr. Haywood's point about music and the arts in the Milton Public Schools, I know for a fact, parents who, that matters to them, that gentleman and his talents and how he and all the staff instill that in middle school students and to see all those young boys up on that stage singing and dancing, that was remarkable.
Last year, we had over sixty-six percent of the student population in the performance arts. That's band chorus, strings, ACE or Pierce players. I would venture to guess that that number's up because we have a hundred and eighty kids, I think, in grade six chorus alone. So, I think that the performance electives are live and well in the Milton Public Schools and I think it's a huge asset in terms of keeping kids connected. So, I would definitely.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Well, thank you all for coming. I just wanna reiterate, it's nice to see parents involved in the, at the middle school. I'm glad you're working to try to get it because as those of us who've been there know, your kids, as they get older, want to see much less and less inside their school building. And it's, it becomes much more difficult to get a creative way to keep parent involvement, which is, as you mentioned, is absolutely necessary. So, I'm glad that it's working and thriving at Pierce. So, thank you all.
I wanna add one quick thing. I just have to say it about the Pierce players. I'm hard to render speechless.
Give me the microphone.
But when my son, my son, last week, we went and saw that show and he turned to me and said, I'm gonna try out for the next show. There were not words. I was speechless. In a million years, I never would've guessed he was gonna do that. And that's gonna be an experience so unlike everything in his comfort zone and anything he's done.
Develop presence.
Everything and a community and to learn how a big project gets done. And I just, again, it's to speak to what everyone talked about, the arts in schools. It's so important and I'm so thankful that he's gonna do that.
Well said.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And next on our agenda, I would ask the school committee to vote the 2012-2013 school calendar. A note, excuse me?
Move approval.
Oh, thank you.
Removed by Mr. Walker. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Sheridan. All right.
I would just note that it was asked at the last meeting about November and Sean Walsh surveyed the principals on which day would be the best for that parent-teacher conference. And that day is driven by the year being divided into four for report cards so that we had no other choice but in fact to schedule that conference day that week.
Any other questions on the 2012-2013 academic year calendar? No? Hearing none of those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. And briefly, just to wind up, we had a very successful kindergarten information evening the other night. You're well-represented by Chairman Pavlichek, who brought greetings. I equate kindergarten information night to graduation. I don't know, Mr. Phelan, have you seen that many smiling faces in one place? And Ms. Sheridan stopped by. She had a building committee meeting. It was a very successful evening. And tomorrow night in each of these schools will be, we have scheduled our first grade information nights. We've worked to perfect these presentations. our first grade information nights. We've worked to perfect these presentations. More people told me that the presentation answered every one of their questions and they felt good about coming into the Milton Public Schools. We hope we have achieved that same goal tomorrow night on a very important night that parents go out to hear about our first grade programs. So, those meetings are scheduled tomorrow night. If any parent or guardian viewing this tonight has a question, they should just call our office, the superintendent's office, and we'll direct them to which school to go to. We've been taking calls all week. Again, the circle of life, next Thursday night is the grade eight through 12 program of studies. And in your binder tonight, I've included the program of studies. I checked with your, head of your organization and I saw local press about other school districts. And if there isn't substantive change in the program of studies, you don't have to vote it. When the high school psych council comes, they'll speak to you about a few course changes, but there were, there's nothing substantive. We all understand there, if anything happens, it's a transfer of one class to another, no increase in staffing. So, I've put in your folder tonight, the program of studies. So, that's a very important night, Thursday, November 9th, at the Milton High School Charles Winchester Auditorium. Current eighth grade parents are invited and parents and guardians of students in nine, 10, and 11, they'll review the course, program of studies. Also, next Thursday night, and we work hard to not have these run parallel, our PAC, Special Education Parent Advisory, has a middle school roundtable. So, that's, that's a conflict. That meeting will be at Pierce at seven o'clock. And again, we've worked with the PAC to perfect these presentations. And Mr. Jett and the special education team at Pierce will be presenting. Again, one more plug for the Walk-a-Thon, February 11th, Milton High School Field House. And the celebration, both presentations, I think you had hands-on feeling of the kind of work and dedication and really how important these events are morale-wise and budget-wise to the Milton Public Schools. I want to recognize, last week, we had a bus leave Milton High School at seven in the morning, and I think some of you at the end were on the bus. And we went to the WGBH High School Quiz Show. Our Milton High School team made the finals and we, you were on the bus, right, Stephen? Oh, you were smiling. You know the story, though. We went and our team competed, but we have signed our oath of, we can't tell how we did. You have to watch on Sunday morning, March 11th. Is that a Sunday? Sunday, March 11th?
Yep.
Sunday, March 11th, on Channel 2, GBH High School Quiz Show, we competed against Hingham. And you'll watch and you'll be very, very proud of Milton High School. And I will give you one quick story. During the presentation, there was a man sitting near me and he looked a little suspicious. He kept going up and speaking to the students. So, he was identified during the presentation as the judge. And so, during one of the rounds, the commentator said, the host, said, "We're going to warn you in the audience, you can't yell out any answers. And you, if you know the answers, you can't say them loud enough that maybe the contestants might hear you." And I whispered to the judge, "You don't have to worry about me because I don't even know the answers to a lot of these questions." And so, you will be very, very proud of Milton High School and Milton High School students. I want to recognize, Mr. Jett alluded tonight, our future problem-solving program. Saturday, I visited the Glover and we had our own mini state bowl with 10 Milton teams, eight elementary school teams and two middle school teams. They competed on a qualifying bowl. All of their written work will be sent into the state, will be notified in February if any of our teams will go to the state bowl on March 24th. But that, I think that the, I was there early and saw only the beginning students. I think they actually thought they were at the national bowl and it was very exciting. The topic is bullying. Our mock trial, our Milton High School mock trial team, won their first round against Catholic Memorial, their second round against Needham High, they did not win. But Monday afternoon at Stoughton Court, they're competing against Wellesley. And where, I want to recognize Mr. Chinman, a parent who's an attorney, who stepped up with Michael Matasoff, Milton High School teacher. And to go out your first time and compete and place in the mock trial program is a huge accomplishment. And so, we want to support them and wish them good luck on that third round. You might remember in past years, DESE, the Department of Education, is going to issue in March, a survey to every educate, public school educator in the state. And the topics are everything from how you think your community supports you, to how your administrators support you, how do you feel about your individual school's climate? Are you given enough professional development? And so, I've put in your green packets today, the draft that we received from the commissioner. It's still being edited. We have been asked for our input. And those surveys will be administered by DESE and all of the results will come back. And it's very valuable data for groups like we heard tonight on how the teachers are feeling about the school, valuable for the principal, central office. And we'll communicate those results in different ways to the community. Also, I want to announce that DESE is working on a new educator evaluation model. Next year, in any community that's a race to the top community, they have to roll out this new model. For the Milton Public Schools, the model will be rolled out two years from now. But we don't want to miss an opportunity to be informed and be on the cutting edge. So, after our finance subcommittee Monday morning, Mr. Pavlichek is your chair, Margaret Gibbons as the union president, James Jett as our representative principal, John Phelan and I will go to BU. And they have five sessions across the state. We'll go to the rollout, a three-hour session Monday morning. So, that, again, we have an outstanding evaluation tool that has many parts of the new evaluation model at the state level. But this will be a negotiated item with our union and we want to start early. I've copied everything for you that the superintendents have seen in a PowerPoint presentation. So, you too can start to become familiar and we'll keep you up to date about that session. I want to now turn the presentation over. The school committee decided last year that we would begin to study and look at our start times of our schools. And this was all tied up with, we don't have enough time between the start times of the three different bands. And Mr. Phelan and his committee of staff and parents and a resident who is in a doctoral program on sleep and research on high school students and what time you should be coming to school and how much sleep you should have, has really been doing extraordinary work. And Mr. Phelan's going to give us an update and find out how we're now moving out into the community for their input. Mr. Phelan?
Thank you Superintendent Gormwee. The school committee gave us the charge to look at start times in form of committee. Superintendent Gormwee, in her email blast, sent out an invitation for parents and staff to participate and administrators to participate. We have chosen parents, staff, from grade levels, elementary, middle, and high, to represent all ages of our district. And we began in earnest with a, really a critical review of the literature and the updated literature on school start time, student and adolescent sleep, and, and how those two different items impact student achievement. The goal of the, or the task that the committee has been given is to research all the most recent articles, look at documents and times and information from surrounding communities, including Milton, and also survey parents, staff, and high school students around start time issues. Our goal and our mission is to find out as much as we can to provide an executive summary to the school committee and also to provide that, obviously, it's the superintendent's leadership team. So, when they go about looking at different options to solve some of the transportation issues we had, that, that group will keep in mind what the research says about what time school should start that, and how that impacts student achievement. As an example, we did an extensive literature review. Every member of the committee had homework. They had to read five articles, they had to summarize those articles, and they had to present them to the entire group. And we had some guest speakers come in, one of whom, again, as Superintendent Gormwee had mentioned, is a resident of the town who was a doctoral student at Harvard. She works at Tufts University, her name is Nancy Street. She came in and did an hour presentation to the group about the effects of sleep on teenagers. And we have been very much immersed in this subject and have some interesting information to provide the leadership team. The reason why we bring it up tonight is that this evening, an email went out to every single parent in the district with a survey attached, with a survey that will be attached on Friday, letting them know who the group is, what the purpose of the group is looking to solve and find out, and that a survey will be coming. The survey will be distributed via email on Friday. They'll have until Monday morning at 10:00 AM to fill it out. And we hope that every parent, every staff person, and we will be doing a sampling of high school students across all four grades to kind of pull information about what's important in regards to start time for students, teachers, and staff. We're excited about this project. If in fact, the district does need to look and decide if transportation would benefit by a change in start time, we feel this executive summary will give them a lot of good information based, and rooted in research, but also rooted in what our parents, teachers, and students feel is important as well. That executive summary will be written in draft form and submitted to the school committee on the 15th of February. And then, we can have a presentation or move the process forward any way the school committee feels is appropriate as directed by the superintendent. So, this did go out to parents. This is an email to all community members today. We want to let them know in advance that the survey is coming and what, what it contains and why we're doing it. And we look forward to their input and our staff input and our high school students' input as well.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Yes, go ahead.
And I know you're going to report out on all this, but in terms of it impacting, because I would think that high school students would need to sleep in later, that would be my guess. But how would that impact games? Because the first games start at like 3:30 or something.
So, the, the three bodies that we looked at, we looked at the research articles and then the document section of our, of our analysis, looked at the Bay State League and when all of the Bay State League teams finished school and how that did impact sports, clubs, and also students with part-time jobs, and also students who may have to provide childcare in the afternoon or in the morning. Our questions that will be part of the survey will ask students and parents and teachers, what are your obligations before and after school? Does your child need to pick up a younger sibling? Would the change in start time impact that, that, that challenge or increase that challenge for you? So, we are looking at all those items.
Good.
As we review the, the literature and the documents.
Mr. Walker?
So, with the timeline that you've outlined, when do you expect we'd be able to provide parents with some certainty about what next year's start times will be?
I, I believe that the, the leadership team will begin to talk about options for start times. And as this information comes forward, we can use that as a guiding tool. Again, that, this committee will not decide start times, the start time, this will only advise the group of leadership directed by the superintendent. I believe that we need to, if we are going to change start times, we would need to do that by early March. That would be my expectation. I do believe that because we went into some extensive research that this might not just be a discussion about when start time should start to save money for transportation and make it more efficient, but it also is a conversation just about how does it impact student learning? So, it could very well inform a decision that could be made for future years as to what time the high school and middle school should start, if in fact, we believe that these types of sleep issues increase student achievement, which is exactly what the data shows and the research shows. So, it could actually be something that we may choose to explore next school year and implement for the following school year, if it is not budget impacted.
Mr. King, this is all budget-driven, correct?
Well, it, it started off as budget-driven. Well, it started off as my child's not getting to school on time driven, or not getting driven fast enough. Basically, the challenge that we have is that there, there are three start times for our schools. Pierce and the High School are one run. The Cunningham College Card is the next run of buses that get picked up and dropped off. And then, the Glover and the Tucker are the last two schools to be served, all by the same fleet of buses. What we found over time is that we are not providing enough time in between each run to get our students to school on time. We remedied that situation, as you can see in the letter to parents tonight, by adding an additional bus to service the students quicker and get them to school on time. It could be budget-driven. If we had that extra bus, we could keep the times the same.
But that's, sorry to cut you off, but, but that's the reason why we're actually changing the times, because we may have to eliminate a bus, correct?
Correct.
If we happen to get the money we're looking for, or, or say 80% of what we're looking for, how high on your priority is restoring that extra bus again? I know we got to put back teachers and we got to put back some art and music programs, and then we have transportation. Is it high on, and I know I'm on the finance subcommittee, but I'm not sure if we actually talked about this.
If I remember correctly, the superintendent did not prioritize the, the putbacks in the budget because we wanted to be able to look at what the sum would be that we may receive from the Warren Committee and prioritize when we, we knew what that amount was. I believe that if we remember, the, the budget reduction is that we were reducing one bus and we were charging more for the bus. So, almost to the transportation world, it was a double hit. So, I think the parents did speak out about it at the Pierce Middle School, if I remember our budget presentations, as this was a concern. And I think that we should really scrutinize whether or not we can achieve these starting time shifts without that bus.
May I answer your question too? Two, two notes. We can't go back to last September when we had so many transportation issues.
Correct.
And simultaneously, when we had to get another bus, that in our world is another teacher. So, out of something bad is coming something good. This start time committee has done a phenomenal job looking at all of the research about sleep. And once you start to hear it, you're going to see it all the time in the press. And to the point that Mr. Phelan shot, shared an article how 10 minutes would make a difference. And so, if we can get the feedback from the staff and the parents and guardians, and we work as Ms. Begley Jones said, within the parameters of the Bay State League, you know, out of something bad may come something good, if we can examine all of this and make some changes, recommended changes.
So, I think I get what you're saying. So, even if we get the money, you may still move the start times and use the money that we would have used for an extra bus to hire another teacher. Is that correct?
I, I wouldn't get that specific. What I would say is that if we didn't have a budget situation, now that we have this research in front of us, we would want to examine whether or not we would want to change the start times because we do see in the research that there could be some student achievement gains by having schools start at a later time for our middle school and high school students. So, we may not have to do it as quickly, i.e. we may not have to do it next September, but it would be, it'd be in the best interest of the district to review the materials closely to decide whether or not we would want to do that for our high school, middle school folks for the following school year.
Well, I think you guys should be commended for, for being proactive on this. It may not have to happen, but it's, I think it's very positive for our school system that you're, you're, you're months in advance of what, of what may happen.
Thank you very much.
Well done.
Anything else, Lieutenant Gormwee?
Yes. Finally, you're going to be receiving circle on your calendars, Monday, March 26th, at nine o'clock in the morning. We can leave finance subcommittee and move right to the Pierce School. Jackie Morgan, our food service director, is inviting every elected official right to our state senators to the Healthier U.S. Challenge Bronze Level Award Ceremony at the Pierce Middle School. And so, our food service and the Pierce School, they're very, very proud to have won this award. And we need our school committee there. You'll be getting lots of reminders and invitations to come to that celebration that Monday morning. Close. Thank you.
Can I say again?
Monday, March 26th, at nine o'clock, the award ceremony in the Senator Brian Ajoy's auditorium at the Pierce Middle School.
All right. Briefly, on my report, first off, I want to recognize and thank you, Katie, Stephen, and Darren for being here tonight. Very good, as we talked about parent-involved... Very good, as we talk about parent involvement at the middle school, it is even better to have student involvement here with us at the school committee. So we thank you very much for being here. We have one item for a vote under my report, which is the annual report of the school committee and superintendent of schools. This appears in the annual report of the town of Milton and is sent in, actually, in January of a year ago in the book that comes out every year. You had, it's been circulated to you from the superintendent by email, and any comments and corrections were solicited. You got it, I received it in email this past week. It's about 25 pages long, and I believe it's already gone into the...
Gone to print.
Gone to print. But we should take a vote to officially forward it on. We haven't had a chance to do that since everyone had a chance to...
Move approval.
Sorry.
Second.
Move by Mr. Walker, second by Ms. Sheridan to approve the report of the school committee and superintendent of schools for the year 2010, 2011. Any other comments? None? All those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you. Ms. Sheridan, on the 350th celebration, why did I think you might be wanting to talk about that?
I'm only going to do it once a month, and I promise, I feel like I've been saying it so many different places, I'll be brief. But we had a great start to the month of January, great kickoff, with three wonderful events that were very well-attended. The art exhibit at the library, which is ongoing till the end of February. We also had the dinner at the Milton Marketplace Cafe, which over 50 people attended. It was spectacular. It was just really amazing. And at the end of the evening, I felt like I was on the publisher's clearinghouse. They called me up and presented us with one of those gigantic checks for $10,000 from the Food Center Marketplace. So that was very generous of them to not only sponsor the event, but then to give us all those proceeds as well, match the funding. And last Sunday, we had a very fun day. The weather didn't quite cooperate to allow us to go skating, but we had a wonderful number of families that joined us at Cunningham Park to go bowling. And I've still been hearing from people that they didn't know that there was a bowling alley there. It was so well-received, and the people at Cunningham were so enthusiastic about the attendance that I believe that we will have it happen again. So look for more information about that. I'll just give you two events that are coming up. One is the mayor of Milton. We are still accepting nominations for anyone that's interested in running for the mayor of Milton. It will be a lot of fun while you're fundraising for the 350th, and your term of service will be one day. It will be Saturday, June 9th. That will be a blast. You'll get to ride in the parade and have your own car, and it should be really fun. So if you're considering that, I think we have three candidates maybe already. We're going to hold those names sacred until we have the big unveiling, so we're really excited about that. And another family event, because this is the school committee, the Forbes House Museum is expanding their Lincoln Day celebration this year to accommodate the 350th, and in partnership with the Milton Public Schools. Actually, Pierce had that on one of their bullets in their presentation tonight. So it'll be Sunday, February 12th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Forbes House Museum. They're going to have all kinds of reenactments, drills and rifle firings, bayonet and saber fencing, demonstration, and interactive Civil War exhibits, exhibits of the Forbes House Museum Lincoln and Civil War memorabilia. You get to visit Lincoln's cabin, which is an exact replica. Hot chocolate will be served, and there is a suggested donation of $5 per family. Then at 4:30, and this is really where the partnership with the schools comes in, in addition, there's going to be a concert of Civil War music with Dixon's Gold, and this is made possible through this partnership with the schools, and we hope that people will put that on their calendar. And if you want more information, it's on our website. I should ask you guys what it is. Milton350thanniversary.org. Thank you.
One question. Does that mean Mary Gormly has to give up being the mayor for one day?
We could nominate her.
I think we should.
Okay.
There's a lot of qualified people.
Thank you.
So we'll move on to the finance subcommittee report. Ms. Kelly isn't here. Would one of the other members of the finance subcommittee like to?
Certainly.
Pick up our only agenda item, which is the full-day kindergarten.
On Monday morning, the finance subcommittee voted to recommend that the school committee approve a modest increase in the full-day kindergarten tuition. The recommended increase is $150 or 4.1%. That is to offset what we anticipate to be a 15% reduction in the full-day kindergarten grant we get from the state. So we think this is a reasonable balance.
So the full fee tuition would be 35.
Correct.
And with the usual sliding scale for people in free...
Correct.
It's a motion from the finance subcommittee. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Sheridan, any discussion? And then, all those in favor? That is unanimous. Thank you.
Should we also still note, though, Mr. Pavlichak, that half-day...
Half-day is still available for those...
Still available for free.
No charge for those who want it.
And if I might, we had an excellent finance subcommittee session. I'm going over full-day kindergarten, and I reminded the subcommittee that the charge from this committee was that full-day kindergarten would not cost the taxpayer. So between the fee and the grant, Mr. Gillis and the business office itemizes right down to administrative costs what it costs to collect the tuitions and run the full-day program. So again, the full-day program between the grant and the fee is, the second half is completely paid for, and it's not paid for by the taxpayer.
All right. So now we'll move on to the policy subcommittee report. Just quickly to, we have a variety of items here. Some are second readings and some are unedited versions of current policies as part of our review process. What I'd like to do is go through them and then reaffirm, you know, without taking eight separate votes, we'll take a vote to reaffirm policies without changes, and then a vote for second readings on those that do have changes. But Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Walker, would one of you like to walk us through them quickly? Any changes since we last walked through them? We'll start with that.
I'll begin, because last, the last meeting, I was homesick watching this on TV, and I heard some questions asked around why we were beginning with the policy, and I just wanted to clarify this. So this is our policy manual, and when I first came on school committee, I actually received a copy of this. And this was created before I came on school committee, so it's been at least six years that this has all been, preceded my six years. But the reason that we are tackling it section by section is because they all have expiration dates, reconsideration dates. And as you noted last week, that if we continued on in the way that we're going, that the way the book was adopted was every two years, they would be up for reconsideration. By the time we got to the end of this book, it would be, in fact, time to probably start again at the beginning of the book, which may not be a bad thing, just to keep us current. And as we know, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee sends us policy updates on a regular basis that should come to our attention. Obviously, people read about it in the news all the time. There are articles in the papers and in magazines. We get them in our magazines, the school committee magazine. So there's a lot of information out there when new policies need to be created. However, I just want to put it out to the committee before we begin any of these votes tonight. Is that how you'd like to proceed? Would you like to continue on with the two-year reconsideration date? What would be, what would be another option if not the two-year? That's the way it was created, to keep it on a two-year process. So, I mean, we can make it whatever we want. We don't actually have a policy that says it has to be every two years. I couldn't find one. Did you find one?
No.
No. So...
I would recommend that you keep it at two years, especially given what happened in the last year, year and a half with bullying, and a lot of people losing their lives, you know? So we were able to edit the existing policy and the social media policies. What's going to happen in the next two years? So I think it's a good idea to review them every two years and update them.
Keep it current?
Yeah.
When we originally voted these, we did them in sections. I mean, we did them as we would bring forward section A and do section A altogether, and then section B and section B altogether. If it's possible to do that, sort of stab at it here tonight. I mean, some of these sections are much bigger than other sections are. And we did that, you know, on a once-a-month basis or something like that. It could be possible to get this done and keep it going without signing up every single meeting of the school committee on doing policies.
I mean, I think that the goal would be, and I don't mean to speak for you, Mr. Walker, but...
You can speak for me anytime.
The, there is a lot of information in here. So we meet at least once a month on this, as we are. We were meeting twice a month for a while, just to get to where we were, because some of these, we need to reach out to our attorneys, some of them, you know, we need to look at the Mass General laws and see if they've changed or if updates have happened. You know, one of the policies, we got input from Bill Ritchie. Another one, we got input from the nurse and Steve Traister. So it's not as easy to say that once a month, we could come back and have a whole section done. You know, as it is, we've been working really hard on these, and it probably will be another month and a half or two before we're finished with section A. So...
I think it took about three years to go through, to create it in the first place, as I recall. It was when Mr. Lovely was chairing the policy subcommittee. I think it took about three years to put this book together initially.
And if I might, I think that as we go through it, it brought back to me how many of these policies, for the public to know, really drive the day-to-day of the school district. Your policies are in the handbooks. I'll deal with parents or teachers, and I have to refer to the BATS, the school committee policy. That's why we're doing it this way. That's why we have these policies. So it's important work.
I also heard from watching the meeting last week that you were, the request was made to receive documents that had track changes. And going forward, any new policies that we do, we will present that way. It was just hard to go back and redo policies that we had edited. So, well, thank you for your input on that.
Let me just say one thing about that, though. I think that's beneficial in some cases. I think the model we've set up, which this committee should evaluate, is that the policy subcommittee does a detailed review, a detailed review, and Mary's included in those meetings, is looking at every comma, period, word. Does this make sense? Should we change this? Should we change that? And then the school committee is the executive review, where we give you the previous version and the new version. And at this level, the expectation is, have we got it right? Does it make sense? Not to go back and say, well, you changed this to a period, that should really be a comma. I don't really think this word, I don't think that's the level of review we want to do at the school committee level, because frankly, I don't think that's a good use of your time, and also that would make these meetings a lot longer. So if you think that model works, great, but I think the risk of providing the track changes, as opposed to saying, here's the old policy, here's the new policy, you're welcome to read both and see if the new one, revised one, makes sense, the risk of providing track changes is we get into some of those detailed discussions. And if we're going to do that, if that's the committee's will, that's fine, but then I would suggest, then we just do it here. I mean, there's no sense doing it twice. So your thoughts?
I don't want to do that. I do not want to be here for six hours reviewing...
I couldn't agree more.
One of the things, and I'm speaking for folks who may not be here, who might feel differently, so, Ms. Kelly, my dear friend, but maybe there's a way that on the new policy that we could just get it highlighted, the substantive changes, or is that too much? Well, sometimes it's deletions, like in some of these, we deleted things that just weren't appropriate anymore. Right. I'd like to find a way to streamline it, because I agree with you guys.
Right. What I would suggest as an alternative to the track changes, because anyone who's familiar with Word knows what that looks like. Every time you make a change, there's a little box on the side to say, you direct us to highlight or underscore substantive changes.
Yes.
We can do that, and I think that makes sense. But track changes is 55. I mean, we're going through these painstaking details.
Right. And that's all I would want to know, is what are the really substantial, really big changes? And other than that, you know, I would trust the subcommittee. I mean, we are all responsible for those policies, but... So if we give you a copy of the previous policy, and when there are edits, we give you the policy with the edits, we will always go over the, any substantive, you know, differences between the two of them, and then we have two readings. So if there are problems with the first reading, then you can get back to us and we can change it. And is there a way just to do yellow highlights on the additions and not worry about the deletions? Because that's the...
Yeah.
Because I wouldn't have to get a new and an old. I would just have to get one that says, here's a substantial change.
I like that model. Let's do that. I like Ms. Bagley Jones.
I mean, other people might disagree. Or I can, we can copy ours that have all the writing and the script. Whatever's easier for you.
There's a saying, when you made the sale, stop selling.
Okay.
Highlights of substantive change. We can do that.
Perfect.
So I can motion that.
Okay.
Second.
So I actually have one small edit that I picked up today. It's on policy ACA-A. I'm very sorry. So it's in between, it's in the middle of the page, in between A and B.
In which one?
ACA-A.
The sexual harassment.
Sexual harassment, sorry. It's such a minor change, but it's one that we made that wasn't on the copy that you got today, so. The only change is the word "or" should not be a part of A. It should be out in the margin. So it's A or B, so that it just, you know, delete the word "or" from where it is and move it out into the margin.
And that may not seem like a big deal, but legally, these are two different triggers of sexual harassment. So it is important that it's not, it's clear that it's one or the other.
And I just happened to catch that today, so that's all I have to say about it.
Okay.
So we have, just to take them in order, well, not in order, but we have a couple that have no edits. Policy AA, the school legal, school district legal status. Policy ACA, the nondiscrimination on the basis of gender. Policy ACG, the complaint procedure resolution discrimination complaints, and policy ADB, the drug-free, it should be drug-free schools on my agenda, not drug-fee schools. That would be something very different. So we have four policies that we need to reaffirm.
Move approval of the four non-edited policies as just read by Mr. Pavlichak.
Second.
Move by Mr. Walker, second by Mr. Carrion. Any comments on the four that we reaffirmed? All those in favor? That's unanimous. And then the other would be to vote the second reading of policy JJIF, the Milton Public School Athletic Concussion Policy. Policy AB, the people in their school district. Policy AC, nondiscrimination. Policy ACA-A, the sexual harassment.
I will move approval of the second reading of what you just mentioned.
Second.
So move by Mr. Carrion, second by Ms. Bagley Jones. Any comments on the second readings of those four policies?
I actually have a question, because in the prior book, the way it was established, on the second reading, you also adopted it. So are we...
That's what we're doing.
I thought the second reading was, if you want to change it, to move adoption.
Okay. So I just wanted to be clear.
Because that's the point of voting the second reading, is to...
That's all. That's one to be clear.
Okay.
It says second reading, the date, and then adoption, so can it just say both, like it did before?
So, Mara, we're vote, we're moving adoption of those policies on the second reading.
Glad we got that clear, though.
Any other comments? All those in favor? That is unanimous again. Thank you. Just a note, it was referred to, the social networking... Just a note, it was referred to, the, the social networking policy. Recall, there was a, a letter from the Milton Educators Association asking for impact bargaining on the, on some of the language in the social network policy. I spoke on the phone with the president of the MEA today. Her concerns are rather minor. I think she and I are going to sit down and walk through them and see what they are, and I'll bring them back to you and see if this is something that actually requires bargaining, or is it, is it minor enough that we can handle it without going through the formal process of going through impact bargaining? So they, they, a few places where something is phrased in an absolute sense, and where some examples could be given where they're unusual, but might be permissible on that. So it's just a question, possibly fine-tuning a little of the language. So I will get a list more completely from her. We're going to meet next week and do that, and then I'll pass it on to the policy subcommittee, and we'll see if we can tweak it enough to get us there. Health and Wellness Subcommittee Report.
Oh, okay. Everybody got their minutes?
Yes, they were passed out tonight.
So the committee members include Steve Traister, who was the athletic director, Mary Goleman, superintendent, John Phelan, assistant superintendent, Jackie Morgan, director of food services, myself, Dr. Roggio, high school principal Rick Arino, high school adjustment counselor, Scott Devlin, high school guidance counselor, Jason Befard from them. It's not known called Milton Hospital, the Beth Israel.
Milton.
Milton, at Milton Israel. Okay. Dr. Karen Spalding from Cunningham, Vicki McCarthy is our community representative, and Todd Ducharme is our parent representative and member of the CATS. So first meeting, we just talked about what we talked about in the past. I just want to be clear about the subcommittee to both my fellow school committee members as well as to the public. It's a subcommittee, so we're not doing the work. It's the school folks who are doing the work. We're just helping and guiding and publicity and, you know, just trying to get the word out about what we think some of the priorities are. So we don't want to step on anybody's toes. And we do try to help with things like applying for grants around mentors and things like that. Mary's been great about building the partnership with Milton Hospital. Milton Hospital's been fabulous with us, and Mary has really reached out to Jason and made that a very successful partnership. They've been, they continue to partner with us for all sorts of things right now. They're doing Operation Eat Right and partnering with the Cunningham Schools, and we're going to continue that. We talk with Dr. Roggio about the mentoring program. We really want to get this program in place called The Great Body Shop, because as you know, our elementary school kids, they get no health education. No health education at this point. And in this day and age, that is just really unacceptable for what kids need to learn. So we're hoping The Great Body Shop, which has a fee to it, but we're hoping to find the money for it. It's not, it's not prohibitive, but it's, it's money. And so the elementary school teachers would be able to incorporate this very developmentally appropriate and easy-to-use curriculum to talk about health and nutrition. Lindley, they use it in Boston still, right?
I've used it. It's wonderful.
It's a great curriculum, isn't it? So that's one of our goals, is to help get that into place. Did you want...
I'm confused. The Great Body Shop, is that it?
It's a curriculum on health and nutrition to use with the elementary school kids. Dental health, social health, physical health, eating right, exercising, and it's a curriculum that teachers use in the classroom. And it's a really great one, yeah.
So could we start it this year, or do we have to wait until next year?
We have a kickoff date of September, because we have to get the materials, and then people have to go through some training. So am I correct, our kickoff date, if we got the money, which I forget how much it is, because it's late?
Less than six thousand.
Less than six thousand, but we still need to come up with the six thousand. We're pulling pockets from here and there of some money from this, anyway. The money, we're pulling the money together, and we'll report back on that, right?
Absolutely.
So we're hoping for September.
Great.
The youth risk behavior survey, we talked about the pros and cons of this, and that we had some confusion in Milton about whether we had done this or not. This is a national survey that gets done about high-risk behaviors. We have not done this for a couple of years. We missed this year. It's done every other year, and it's something that I would continue to push for us to do, because it gives us really good data. It can also give you bad publicity, bad headlines, but every community has at-risk kids and has at-risk behaviors, and we need to know what they are so that, because data drives instruction educationally, data also drives intervention. So we are going to keep talking about that. Jackie Morgan keeps talking about the new law that will be in place around the acceptable food on school grounds, which I won't go into, because she is. And then we also talk about how do we support the guidance department and the adjustment counselors, because again, health and wellness looks at social, emotional, mental, physical health of our students, and so that's a really important piece for us.
Justin, can I just ask?
Sure.
I know you want, you don't want to go into acceptable foods, but could you give us an example of what's not acceptable?
You know, the new health laws that will be going into effect, thirty minutes after school, you know, eat whole wheat food. No, I'm not saying it, Parrish.
You didn't even...
Can't eat anything. Can't eat anything. No, 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 no. The new law that's going into effect that Jackie Morgan came and presented to us on, and she'll keep presenting to us on.
Oh, okay.
There are certain things you cannot sell in school, things you can't have after school for thirty minutes, like the boosters, hot dogs, they can't sell for thirty minutes after school. So it's a whole new law going into effect in September that we don't have a choice about, and Jackie will come back and talk about it.
And this forum is very valuable, the Wellness Committee, because Jackie Morgan then went to my PTO presidents, and they, it took their whole meeting, because they bring, they're talking about people, parents and guardians bring food into the classroom, that can't happen, Mr. Cohen. And all of their bake sales, and they were talking about how much they make from their bake sales, thirty minutes before and thirty minutes after, no more bake sales. So the PTOs found the information invaluable. Jackie's going to do follow-up with each of the PTOs, so it was a good bounce off.
Yep. And what we try to do is think of things, something we can do for the students, something we do for the parents, and something we do for the staff. So working on a fitness challenge for the staff is a stress reduction. Oh, and Mary, I forgot, because it was at our last meeting, what was the thing we're talking about with the parents for March? It's in my, it's in the minutes that haven't been approved yet. What was it?
The goal for the parents was to have a guest speaker. The...
What was it?
Rich Arino was going to ask Chris...
Substance abuse, yeah.
Chris Heron, who's a former Celtics player, who's currently the topic of a documentary on ESPN regarding substance abuse and his experience as a Fall River youth and Boston College basketball player and Boston Celtics player. He's on the tour and a circuit of talking to high school students throughout the country, and we're trying to book him for the spring, if not next fall. He's spoken at several school districts in the area, and we hope to have him in Milton very soon.
And it's not in the minutes, because it's in the meeting we just had, which hasn't been approved yet. So those are the minutes from the Health and Wellness Subcommittee, as well as just an update. And Mary and John, do I leave anything out?
No.
Excellent group.
Thank you.
Excellent chair.
Our Facilities Subcommittee Report. Sharon, Norm, and Mr. Cohen, who's doing that?
Well, we have some good news on the, in the facilities. We used twenty-five thousand dollars of our, our green community grant that the town got, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that money was allocated to the Pierce Middle School, some of it was, twenty-five thousand. We changed all the light bulbs from ninety-four watts down to fifty-five, a hundred and seventy fixtures. And we will be cutting the energy by seventy-five thousand kilowatts this year, which is about a ten percent savings. That's huge. The, Bill Ritchie was instrumental in getting the fixtures and in-house labor for a total of twenty-five thousand. And then because we were energy efficient in the hallways, NSTAR gave us a further grant of seven thousand, which really brought the price, brought a thirty-five thousand dollar job down to nineteen. That was builders and developers, we loved that. That's a ten percent savings. So that's huge. And the rooftop solar panel project is about ninety-eight percent done. The kiosks still have to be completed by the developer, and NSTAR has to approve the interconnection of the completed projects. It usually takes a little, little while, maybe a few months, before the developer receives these kiosks. Until then, we're getting the benefit of electricity at no cost. So that's good news.
Great.
But we don't expect the same level of service from the developer once we start paying them. The off-site solar project is moving ahead, but very slowly. Still trying to secure a site. Our sites has been a challenge for the developer. We'll keep you updated on that. Consumption of electricity, we're down about seven to ten percent over last year because of our green energy initiatives. And that would be the fourth consecutive year of reducing our consumption of electricity. That's big news, big savings, could be more teachers. We're watching the heating bills for this year, given the mild winter. It could be a similar savings to the electricity, and we'll keep you updated on that as well. Bill Ritchie had all the boilers in the schools, he had them all tested, and right now, they're running at about eighty-seven percent efficiency. You won't get much better than that. So well done to Bill. He's searching for more ways to save five to seven percent on our heat budget over the next twelve months. And we'll let you know when that happens. And that's the facilities.
The other piece related to that, just from Monday night's town meeting, of course, the Consolidated Facilities Department's heard a couple of changes. The one that involves us is formerly Bill's salary was transferred over from our budget into the Consolidated Facilities budget in the town. The plans for next year won't involve transferring any more salaries out of our account, but they are looking at for the fiscal thirteen budget, identifying some contracts that sit in various different town budgets, for instance, elevator inspection contracts and nice identifiable discrete contracts that live with multiple vendors in multiple departments and bringing those into Consolidated Facilities. So when we see the fiscal thirteen budget presentation at the annual town meeting in May, that's likely to be the, the only real difference from what we saw Monday night at the Consolidated Facilities budget for, for the rest of this year. He's not looking at hiring new staff, or the staff was all outlined Monday night. He's got to go ahead and hire some of those open lines now, but it's really the beginning of getting that operational. And at this point, not having the, the tracking software and so forth installed yet, it's looking like we're just going to deal with, again, some very easily identifiable, quantifiable costs, as opposed to saying, we're talking about moving heating and utility costs into a central department or anything like that. These are just those sorts of things. So that's what, what is happening there. School Building Committee Report. We met.
We don't see each other very often these days.
No, but there's very little left to do for the School Building Committee. They paid, we made the transfer to the school department to pay for the final piece of the Copeland gifts on the instruments, the final purchase out of the Copeland money. The last bills were paid on the plaques downstairs and in the various places. Really, all that is left is to collect
Insurance.
The insurance money, about six hundred thousand dollars is sitting in that fund, and bring it back to the town. There is about eighty thousand dollars remaining in the school building funds that is expendable. At the moment, probably a good portion of it go towards some of the ductwork on the roof of this building, since that was part of the project, spend it down on that. With, we're also reserving a little, just in case there are legal costs associated with trying to get the money back from the insurance company. But those are the only expenditures remaining, and then hopefully, we can put ourselves out of business after what seems to be a million years.
Has the insurance company acknowledged that they, that they owe us the money? Because I know...
Yes, they, yes.
I know how they operate.
Originally, no. Now, yes.
Good.
So, I mean, the, the number we have is actually their number, about six hundred and ten thousand dollars, I think it is, is what they say is left in that holding pool, is a self-insurance pool. And so...
Interest-free?
Getting them to release it, I, I'm not sure. I have to go back and look at that.
I know it's not interest-free on their part, but it's interest-free on our part.
It might, I have to look. But I know, the, the point now is to recapture that money, and like the MTC grant, it would go to pay the bonds that were used to build the school. So it'll go straight to debt service to, you know, sort of a proposition two-and-a-half underwrite, drive down the tax rate on those, on those override bonds. Yes?
Glenn, didn't you say at our meeting that that would maybe turn out to be about fifty dollars per household?
I think that's the, no, that's the MTC.
Oh, MTC, okay.
We got four hundred and some, four, four hundred and forty-two thousand dollars or something in MTC grants with a little over eight thousand households in Milton. A quick estimate is you're in the ballpark of fifty dollars a household this year. And then with the six hundred thousand dollars, if that were, that may come in one chunk or two, or we'll have to see how that works out, but that, that's obviously a little more. So it's, it's good news from a taxpayer perspective.
Exciting.
Yes.
John Phelan and I were just saying, this town is very, very fortunate. You know, if you had to pay for the expertise on the warrant committee, on the school building committee, you know, yourselves and the school committee, that school building committee, that is an extraordinary group. I don't know what the number is, all of those meetings to account for every bill, every inch of every...
Three hundred and fifty-five.
I, I had read that, but I did more than... Three hundred and fifty-five meetings.
That's the main meeting.
And the expertise to, to oversee. I say, when I speak to groups of parents, you have a school building project where you're never going to hear, all through the project, or in years to come, one bill that was inappropriate, or one dollar that was mismanaged. I've watched you, all of you go over every single bill, question every single payment, every step of the way. It is, it's been an extraordinary endeavor.
And that began under the leadership of Mr. Winchester. We have a lot to credit.
What Tony Chakel and I are looking at doing is, sort of as a final summary, to try to put together what the projections were for costs for this project and compare them to what the actual costs turned out to be over time, because there was a lot of talk about that as we added on and added on and added on. And trying to overlay all those spreadsheets from all the town meetings and then actually put it next to what the actual cost is. I think it's going to be an interesting little project, and I think it's, it's actually going to be very enlightening, because the, the way the school building finance changed over time, our estimates were actually, I think, I think it'll show we're very high. So we actually, I believe, spent a lot less money than we put out initially. So it'll, it'll be an interesting exercise to try to pull all that together.
And I, in a closing on that, when we see these new groups of parents, you know, I'm sure some people groan, but I feel the need to say to them that we're the most fortunate residents in the state. A hundred and forty million dollar school building project.
A hundred and fifty-three.
A hundred and fifty-three. Ninety cents on the dollar.
Thirteen million.
Every one, completely new school, every room renovated to new, I go through these schools and say to people, can you tell which rooms renovated and which is new? The project was extraordinary. The space, the climate for teachers, for students, for teaching and learning, and then to have an eight million dollar donation that enhanced, that Mr. Palachek corrects me, turned into...
Twenty-seven.
Million dollars that enhanced the buildings. But it's, but for people coming new into the buildings, who might think that these buildings were always there, the effort on behalf of the community and how fortunate we all are.
The amazing number is, we talked about ninety percent, it was ninety percent of the allowable cost, but even when you figure it all out for the hundred and fifty-three million dollar project, the town of Milton actually spent about thirty million to do all, all of the schools. And when you look at the cost of even putting up a boilerplate school on a, on a, not, not even one of the schools that's usually listed as being, you know, a Taj Mahal school, but just an off-the-shelf school where they're using preform plans now, it's amazing what we got for, for thirty billion dollars.
And that's why, I'm not going to belabor this, but the Consolidated Facilities, I said to the group of parents at the Glover, that Mr. Winchester said to me, don't let these, don't be a part of any administration that lets these buildings not be maintained. So when we see a custodian cut up, that, that's very, very meaningful. Don't be a part of any leadership team or any administration that doesn't maintain these buildings for generations to come. And it is a huge charge. And personally, that's why the Consolidated Facilities, they're going to make an attempt and an innovative way of really looking out for what is the property of the town.
On that note, I'd move to our last Subcommittee Report, which is... On that note, I'd move to our last Subcommittee Report, which is the capital planning, which takes us on into the future.
Nice segue.
Beautiful segue. So Capital Improvement Planning Committee has met twice. The schools submitted two items, exterior ductwork for the high school, and the replacement of our 15-year-old dump truck. Both of those items were approved and will be submitted, recommended to the Warrant Committee for inclusion in the capital article for the annual town meeting. There are two other areas where I pushed for some integration. One was the information technology area submitted a request for backup generators to be housed at the Pierce, which actually would be backup power for the servers and telephones for the town, and I asked whether that also included power at the Pierce, to which the answer was no. And I said, so shouldn't we include another generator, so the Pierce could have power if there was in fact a power outage? So either we're going to increase the capacity of one of the two generators they requested, or we're going to ask for a third generator to address that concern. So that's good. And there, we may actually add one more item to the request, there was an item, again, for replacement of the town telephone system. I asked how much it would cost to include the schools in the upgrade of that telephone system, and we requested that they go back and get us an estimate on that, but I anticipate that the schools' upgrade of the telephone system will also be included when that item is-
Good.
The generators were discussed in the school building project a while back when there was talk of trying, when there was an issue of being emergency shelters in the schools-
Right.
-generators, emergency generators at one or two sites. The funding for that, I recall, never came through. There are some specifications existant to the town as to what it would take. I think we were talking a portion, they usually just back up a portion of the school, enough for the, you know, whatever your emergency spaces, say it's the auditorium or the gymnasium and the kitchens, and that sort of stuff, so they can be an emergency setup, not necessarily for all the lights in all the buildings.
Right, although in this case, I think at the Pierce, this would be a little more extensive if we had a third generator.
Those estimates exist, because we did them five or six years ago, so they do exist. Anything else on capital planning? Anything else on Citizen Speak topic responses?
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, Kate. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Good night.